One minute to find out if you may have prediabetes. You can do it here.
Thank you. We will first meet as the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Borgeson.
President.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Kraft is absent. Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Present. Thank you. Item A, approval of the minutes from meetings on August 7th, August 10th, and August 11th. Item B is setting September 1st as the date for hearing on certified assessment correction. I have a motion and a second to approve A and B. Are there any questions to either of these? Then, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Okay, well, I'm. Uh, for those on the Zoom, please mute yourself if you're not speaking. And, uh, without the, so I just have to guess if everyone's done voting, so hopefully you all are. Uh, I didn't get a vote from Commissioner Kavanaugh. Or Commissioner Rogers. You guys vote yes on items A and B? Okay, motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments. Would anybody like to address the Board of Equalization on anything that is not on the agenda? If not, we will move down to, got a lot of resolutions today. We have resolutions D through N. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve and adjourn. I am not aware of need for executive session, so that should work. Do you have a question, Commissioner Rogers?
Mr. Goodwill, can I, I just want to be clear on this because this is the point I made. I want to understand how this operates. So explain to me how this data era operates for H, for H, I, J, L, M, and E.
Well, Commissioner Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. I would on these, except these aren't ours. What I think they are, and Dan Escher can explain more to you, is I think there was some dead entry going on in the wake of the board's determinations with respect to the property valuation protests. And every time that many things get entered, there's always a handful, in my understanding, where something gets transposed or, you know, somebody made a mistake entering something. And I think, um, this is the clerk's attempt to fix some of these.
Well, no, just let me, then I'll wait because I thought it was this point where you all bring stuff back and say there's some correction. I wanted to make sure I understand it, so never mind. Yeah. So, no, yeah, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Then could we please vote?
Who made the motion at second on that?
Commissioner Rogers moved. Commissioner Boyle seconded.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Borgeson is voting yes. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. So we are adjourned as the Board of Equalization, and we will now convene as the Board of Corrections. Could we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Kraft is absent. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. Thank you. Item one, approval of the minutes from the Corrections meeting held July 14th. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Rogers. Questions or comments to the minutes? Then may we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments. Would anybody like to address the Board of Corrections on any item that is not on the agenda relative to corrections? If not, we will move to item three, the report from the Director of Corrections. And welcome our fearless leader, Mike Myers. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. Um, if you'll turn your attention to enclosure number one, Administrative Services. Following the first month of the fiscal.
Mike, I'm barely hearing you. Make sure you're speaking right into the mic. These masks make it a little tougher. Thank you.
Following the first month of the fiscal year, we are $315,188 under budget. Thank you. $357,250 was spent on overtime costs during July. That's a decrease of about $25,000 from the previous month. Uh, I do, however, anticipate that, um, our overtime costs in the month of August will increase due to, um, more absences of staff due to COVID-19. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections. Uh, due to the continued drastic impact of COVID-19 on community corrections activities, our data is significantly different than the norm. Many of our staff have been repurposed to allow essential functions to continue. Work release, excuse me, work release and the reentry assistance program, or RAP, were temporarily closed on July 31st in order to compensate for staffing losses associated with positive COVID-19 tests. We anticipate that they will remain closed until at least after the Labor Day holiday. The eventual reopening will be evaluated against the ability to safely maintain adequate staffing levels at the jail. The GED program, which was one of our last remaining programs we had functioning, it requires individuals to be moved from housing units to classrooms, were also temporarily suspended at the end of the month in order to reduce cross-contamination and consolidate staffing. We had one individual who served eight days in the sanction center. Nine individuals served 57 days in the transitional discharge center. Our reentry services staff continue to have many port, significant portions of their workdays diverted into facilitating virtual court. Nearly 500 court hearings and over 50 hours of discovery materials were facilitated. 24/7 continues to operate drastically differently in the, during the pandemic in order to reduce human-to-human contact. Nonetheless, 48 individuals were placed on the program. 1,644 breath tests were completed using remote breath testing technology. Seventeen were positive for alcohol use. There were 17 no-shows for breath testing. The overall compliance rate for breath test, breath testing was 99.1%. Thirty-one individuals were monitored for 750 days of SCRAM monitoring. There were zero no-shows, zero tampering, and zero alcohol violations. The SCRAM monitoring compliance rate for July was 100%. There were 48 saliva drug tests administered with nine violations. There were 95 drug testing patches submitted with 44 violations. Work release admitted 12 individuals. House arrest admitted 84 individuals. Twenty-three individuals were admitted to RAP. Nine individuals in RAP were then subsequently placed on electronic monitoring. Fifty-nine individuals were admitted to corrections programs in the jail, and two individuals completed a GED. Pretrial services continues to provide daily information to the courts regarding candidates for bond reduction and early pleas in response to the pandemic. Twenty-four individuals were referred to for priority prosecution, saving 289 bed days. Two-hundred-and-forty-six individuals were placed on pretrial release. In total, throughout the month, 1,300 individuals were managed on pretrial release with a 92% compliance rate, and 204 individuals visited the law library. The law library was also closed at the end of July to minimize movement around the facility. This was done in consultation with a public defender's office. Services such as providing legal forms and paperwork continue to be provided. Enclosure number three, compliance. Our third-year ACA documentation is currently being gathered. We anticipate our accreditation audit to occur in October or November, but that could be impacted, the timing of that could be impacted by the pandemic. Enclosure number four, personnel. Fifteen new officers joined Douglas County Department of Corrections for their training academy on July 20th. Unless staffing levels dictate otherwise, we will conduct quarterly academies from this point forward. Seventeen new officers completed field training on July 10th. Eleven officers, all below the rank of sergeant, left employment in July. This was an increase over what we have seen in the past several months. The impact of shift bidding and COVID-19, in addition to our typical attrition, may have contributed to the increase. We concluded the month having 381 of our authorized 396 uniformed staff, a net gain of four. Enclosure number five, our population. We had 1,519 admissions. This is an increase largely attributed to one day, related to the protests. Releases, 1,518. Again, that corresponds with the admissions. Our high count was 1,207. Our low count was 1,115. Our average daily population was 1,160, which is a, is a decrease. Commissioners, as you know, I'm presenting a little later in the month than I typically do, and we have been a little more concerned about our population during the month of August up till now. So that decreases old information that only pertains to July. Custodial sanction bed days were at 46. I, I do want to give probation some kudos for coming up with many other ways to manage their population besides incarceration. Those numbers, that 46 is probably 10% of what that number used to be, maybe even less. So they have really stepped up during the pandemic and found alternative ways to hold people accountable without using incarceration. The U.S. Marshal population has increased. The ICE population decreased. The felony pretrial population increased. The misdemeanor pretrial population also increased, but that was also influenced by a one-day aberration by the massive amount of arrests associated with the protest. Probation violations increased. Uh, the female population decreased. One of our four female housing units remains closed and has been designated as a quarantine unit. We completed, no, excuse me, enclosure number six, medical. Uh, there were 1,167 intake screenings and 373 physical and health assessments conducted. Inmates were sent out 18 times for emergent medical care. Five of those were by 911. There were five hospital admissions, which resulted in 22 days of hospitalization. Enclosure number seven, mental health. There were 116 initial psychiatric assessments. There were 82 initial mental health assessments. There were 58 mental health infirmary placements. There were three Board of Mental Health referrals, and there were zero placements to long-term psychiatric facilities. Throughout the month of July, the, um, we, well, it's actually during the month of July, they just started opening up the, the Regional Center for Transports after their own COVID outbreak. So we didn't have any that were transported, but they have since started receiving new patients. Other noteworthy items. DCDC continues to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. Beginning in mid-July, we began to see an increase in the staff members who were testing positive for COVID-19. As those numbers continued to grow and began to have an impact on staffing levels, the regret, the regrettable decision to temporarily close work release and the reentry assistance program was made in order to consolidate staffing. During the final week of July, several individuals housed at the CJC were placed on electronic monitoring. Those who were unable to be safely monitored in the community will return to jail on July 31st when the CJC was closed. House arrest and 24/7 sobriety can, uh, programs continue to remain open as those are vital to keeping individuals out of jail. Also in mid-July, we begin to see the first spread of the virus from within the jail itself. However, we must continue to serve meals, deliver mail, facilitate court, see individuals in our medical clinic, among others. These essential activities cannot be completed without staff and incarcerated individuals moving between various areas of the jail. As such, they will continue to come into contact with other individuals. Our annexed housing units, which are an open barracks style, are only used for individuals who've completed a 15-day quarantine period. This process was successful until mid-July when individuals housed in an annexed unit were exposed by a staff member who had tested positive. The physical layout of the annex allowed for the virus to spread quickly in that housing unit. All individuals who were housed in that unit have successfully completed their quarantine period, most with no or minimal symptoms. We have also had to overcome disruptions to our kitchen and other operations which employ inmate, inmate workers. Many of these workers or trustees are housed in the annex. We did experience a couple of occasions where meals were, were delivered up to two hours later than normal due to changing out the entirety of our kitchen trustees with no advance notice. We continue to move forward on projects despite the significant impact that COVID-19 has had on our operations. Those include requests for proposals for body-worn cameras, the solicitation of bids for a body scanner, request for proposals for program evaluation, request for proposal for tablet devices for the incarcerated population, request for proposals for pretrial release supervision software, and many others. The Department of Corrections experienced one of its more challenging 24-hour periods in recent memory on July 26th. Following a protest in which resulted in more than 120 arrests, there were a series of known and unknown factors which would subsequently lead to long delays in processing individuals both in and out of custody. We have reviewed the circumstances of this day internally with the, with our law enforcement partners and Doc, and with DotCom. In summary, the Department of Corrections is not and will not be equipped for swift processing of large numbers of individuals, of, or large numbers of simultaneous arrests. Our physical plant, as well as certain aspects of the booking process, will present bottlenecks which will always create delays when large number, numbers of individuals are brought in for booking at the same time. DotCom routinely schedules system maintenance during the early morning hours on Sundays. We have asked DotCom leadership to investigate the impact of scheduling routine maintenance on weekdays rather than weekends. Further, when large protests are known in advance, DotCom will be notified so that they can reschedule downtime due to maintenance and upgrades whenever there may be an impact. The arrests arrived late enough at the Department of Corrections so that we were unable to process the, all of the individuals before the systems went offline for their scheduled maintenance. When the systems did not come back online following the system maintenance, the Department of Corrections staff who were on duty were repeatedly told that the outage would be resolved in a matter of minutes. So they did not immediately escalate the issue up the chain of command. We will now immediately implement all possible paper processes to avoid further delays. Cots were being deployed to the court holding area and to a gymnasium to decrease the level of crowding and holding cells at 1:30 a.m. That being said, it was not possible to maintain the typical standard of social distancing throughout this event, even when using the additional spaces. Per our established practice, individuals were provided with a freshly laundered mask, and their personal mask was placed into their property, which was returned to them upon their release. DotCom launched an investigation into what went wrong with the upgrades, as well as looking into their own response throughout the day. To their credit, they have provided us with a thorough explanation of what went wrong and were accountable for not escalating the situation as quickly as they believed they should have in retrospect. In conclusion, this was a very challenging day for the Department of Corrections, for those who were arrested and their loved ones. We regret the negative impacts that were experienced that day. However, in the face of a perfect storm of circumstances, our staff continued to work at a rapid pace to attempt to overcome the challenges for hours on end. The last of the protesters who could be released without going to court were released at approximately midnight on July 26th. Despite the overwhelming circumstances that we have faced throughout 2020, our staff have continued to perform at an amazing level. Our community owes them a debt of gratitude for working in a dangerous environment during normal times. During a pandemic, they continue to fulfill their mission of public safety, even though the risk of working in a confined space with large number of people places their risk of, of infection far higher than nearly any other profession. While they are often forgot about in the court, in, in public discourse, they should not be. They are, they are the most heroic that our community has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioner Boyle.
Mike, I want to tell you, I really appreciate that last summary of, of what took place. That was, uh, very important, and, um, uh, I, I can't imagine it was a perfect storm, all those things happening at once. And, uh, I was going to call, and I thought, that's all you need, is I just laid back and watched. And, uh, but I admire how it was handled. I admire your leadership, and, uh, the folks over there are not forgotten. Uh, I, I, we think of them and we appreciate very much their important role in, uh, serving our community and the justice system. It's, uh, uh, we would be lost without them, so, uh, we appreciate them very much. So, uh, I, I want to ask a couple of questions. I am impressed by the 24/7 program that you have a remote. You were able to do that by remote. I want to ask you, uh, how does, how does that work? And I guess talk a little bit about the program. People come into your facility to be tested for alcohol and drugs. And if they test positive, they have another place to sleep at night inside our facility.
Correct.
And, um, but then if they pass it, then they go on to work and so forth. So, but you're able to do that by remote, so tell me more about, tell us more about that.
One of the things that we did early on in response to the pandemic was, we knew that having, you know, a few hundred people every day coming in and, and being in very close proximity to our staff who run that program was not a wise course of action. So, um, originally, that program has, um, would operate under the assumption that people would come in twice a day for breath testing in person, uh, and come in for drug testing at least twice a week. Um, we have reduced that face-to-face contact significantly, first by substituting, um, remote, um, breathalyzers instead of coming in face-to-face. What that means is individuals carry a, a device that is a webcam, a breathalyzer, and a, and it pinpoints their GPS, all in one, uh, small machine which could fit in a, in a pocket or in a purse. Um, we programmed that to go off, uh, a few times each day, and the individual then has to provide a breath test within a couple of minutes. That, they also, um, the, the, the camera on it uses facial recognition software to assure that the person who's providing the test is the person who's on the program, and they couldn't hand it off to somebody else.
That, that's really impressive. Is that something that you are thinking of keeping? I mean, I'm thinking of someone who lives on 180th and Blondo, having to drive downtown. Is that something that we could, for their convenience and for us and all the rest of it?
Yeah, but between that and our, our, what we've always had as an alternative to the breath testing because there are certain numbers of people due to their work schedules and so forth can't come in during the testing windows. Um, we've used the, the transdermal or, or the ankle bracelets which detect alcohol through their skin. But between those two options, yes, those who, because of conflicts with childcare or work, um, or just geography, those are options for us to, to continue.
Was it pretty good reporting? Using the remotes, was it pretty good reporting?
It is. I, we have seen, especially in our drug testing, because we've gone to a different model of that as well.
Okay.
We haven't seen quite the high rate of compliance. Because having someone come in and do a test right then and there, it's always on their mind that they have to come in.
Right.
And, and not having to see us, for folks that are early in their addiction recovery, um, it, it reduces a little bit of the strength of the program. So I would like to see us, when the time is right, to get back to more of that face-to-face interaction because I think it, it, it keeps people on their toes and keeps their sobriety top of mind a little bit more.
Okay.
So, these are effective, they're just, they're not quite as effective as what we had been doing prior to the pandemic.
Okay. Then I want to ask about the incident where all the folks came in who were protesting on Farnham Street. And I, I guess the question that came to my mind was, uh, was the city billed for those?
I'm sorry?
Was the city billed for those people?
I'd have to check on that.
Well, I think there'll be, if they were, it'd be enough of an incentive.
Sure.
Not to do that again. I mean, the site and release is, really makes a lot more sense. It's not us to say, but, uh, it's the city prosecutor and so forth. You know, in an event like that, I, it seems like, uh, site and release makes a lot more sense than a protest. Uh, but that's my opinion, which, uh, you know, but that's worth.
The, this precise answer to that question would be on a, on an individual-by-individual basis, depending upon what charge they came in under.
Right, what they've done and so forth. And I know that that, you know, there's some people they kept, they had other charges and so forth, but that's, it can still be worked out with site and release. But if the city's billed for that, I think that is, uh, something that I pay more, a little more attention to. I'm not trying to gig them, but that was a expensive proposition for us. Then I want to ask you about, um, some of the pretrial services. Uh, I know there's a pretrial release software. Is that, uh, is that working pretty well, or have you got it yet, or?
Uh, we actually just, um, I believe that the board may have approved that last, at your last meeting. And they, it is, so it's, it's not yet implemented. But it, um, it will really tie together and put, um, a lot of the services that we have available into one platform. One of the things that's important is to get the buy-in from the prosecutors and the judges, and typically the, the defense attorneys are going to be, you know, on board because we're getting the folks out of jail. But to really, to really build in evidence that we're continuing to keep the public safe with the measures that we're doing to keep people out of jail, this will give us a platform where all this data can be made available to, um, to everybody involved in a case, and so that they can see exactly how the person is doing and everything, uh, at the same time.
Well, if there's anything we can do to help you with that, and I want to ask you this, uh, open question. If there's anything at all that, uh, you need from us. Uh, you're doing a terrific job under really difficult, uh, situations, and your staff is as well. And we appreciate it and honor you and them for the work they do, so.
Thank you.
Let us know if there's, and I haven't been over to visit because I know you're pretty restricted over there. And so, uh, in any event, uh, keep going and let us know what you might need, okay? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Thanks for this. Your reports are increasingly informative as you go along. You're getting better and better at this, so, uh, thanks. A couple, uh, quick questions regarding the pandemic. You know, we were very good for a very long time avoiding, uh, outbreak in the correction center. Congratulations on that. But sooner or later, it seems to come everywhere. And so, uh, in the last month or so, it's landed with a venue. And so in the last month or so, it's landed with a vengeance on your facility. The average daily population that you give us for this last period is 1,160. Of that census population, what are the current positive COVID cases in that 1,160 roughly population?
Look, Commissioner, that changes a little bit every day. And we have some, some housing units that we presumed, because of the style that they were, because we had two housing units where about 80% of the people who we tested were positive. And when we had cases in other housing units that were laid out in a similar physical way, we consulted with Dr. Poor, because we did have a, we, we have a few more tests now than we did, but we had a few weeks where we were very low on our supply of testing inside of the jail. So we discussed how to, the value of doing more testing versus just presuming that everybody in these housing units needed to be treated and monitored, as if they could be positive, because there wasn't really anything different that we were able to do had we known on a case-by-case basis who was positive and who was not. Our, our official number of confirmed cases among inmates is probably around 80, and I'm sorry, I don't have that exact number. There may have been more in some of these housing units that were asymptomatic, that we didn't test, because we didn't have the tests to, sufficient quantity of tests to test them all.
So roughly speaking, as, as well as we can tell right now, it's 80, correct?
Some, some of those individuals have been released, and some of those individuals have sent, have, are, have completed the protocol altogether. So I would say you'd probably take that number down to half of what the, you know, I know at least half of those individuals were in our first housing unit that kind of had a wide outbreak, and, and they have been cleared.
Okay. And of the 381 staff that you have, how many currently are testing positive for?
Well, since the beginning, and this, and if you go beyond our uniform staff, because we've had other, you know, our, our records staff and other supportive services have also had positive cases. There are, you know, upwards of 450 to 475 individuals. If you throw in our medical contractors, you get over 500 individuals that work there.
I'm having difficulty hearing those numbers.
I'm sorry. So we have, we probably have in total close to 500 people. The, the 381 are just our correction officer staff.
Gotcha.
There have been, today, there have been 113 cases since the beginning of the pandemic. About 95 of those have, have happened in the last six weeks. The positive news that I can tell you is that our last week, we seem to maybe be turning a corner. I'll knock on this wood, but we have had three or four days consecutive now with no cases among our staff. About 10 days ago, we had 50 staff who were out at the same time. Yesterday, that number had dropped to 22. So we have been getting healthier as a group in the last 10 days.
I've heard that the inmates are required to pay for their test results. Is that correct?
That is not correct.
Okay, so they're given test results for free?
Correct.
And do they have to request those, or do those come automatically?
They are told them verbally. We've had some requests, and I'm, I'm going to backtrack and clarify, Commissioner, because I think maybe, they are given their test results for free, verbally they are told. If they want to request their medical records, there is a nominal fee to process that. So there, if that may be what you've heard, is.
I was trying to get the test thing. I presume that everybody who gets a test wants to know how they test.
Correct, yes. So they're all told that verbally, and I, I'm sorry, I needed to backtrack, and I forgot your second part of your question.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
All right.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
I thank you and your team very much for what you do and the effort you've put forth. I want to be sure Joe Lorenz is here, and on Monday, we have our CARES meeting, Monday mornings. But I heard you mention about the overtime and what's taking place because of the COVID-19 virus. So I want to be certain that we're putting some reimbursement in there as we go along, kind of planning on that for certain. So we'll, they'll maybe in touch with you to be sure we're counting that correctly, and then get it approved by the accounting firm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments from Mr. Myers? I wish you could find a quiet, uneventful day at work soon, Mike. We do have great confidence in, in you and your leadership team in some very challenging times, and wish you the best.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn from Board of Corrections? And we stand adjourned. I will now call to order the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Mr. Clerk, could we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Present. And I do want to welcome back Commissioner Kraft. This is the first time he's been able to join us for a while, and it's good to be back at full strength. Welcome back, Mark. Item 1A is the approval of the minutes from last week's meeting, or excuse me, two weeks ago, August 11th. And item B is claims for payment processed through August 25th. What is it? Questions or comments to either of these items? Then could we please vote?
Commissioner Kavanaugh, how do you vote? Yes, okay. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we find the consent agenda, where we have items A through L. We have a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Rogers. Questions or comments? Anything? Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Questions on item E, resolution authorizing the county purchasing agent to execute contracts for the renovation of 1805 Harney Street building for Douglas County District Courts in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, $650,736 in CARES Act funding. And I see Ms. Carlson is here. I just want to confirm one quick thing.
Good morning. Diane Carlson, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning. This is just a confirmation of what we dealt with recently relative to the district court's request for basically updating the courtrooms and providing them with the technology that they needed to do their work during this pandemic, right?
Yes, that's correct. This project was previously approved by this board, and the CARES Act funding was vetted through Deloitte and approved as well. And so this resolution, and also Resolution J, which is similar but for a different project, is simply giving the department, the Public Properties Division Department, the ability to select a contractor for the work without following all normal bidding requirements that are set forth in state law. And the reason for that request is due to an emergency of the pandemic, and that they need to go about more quickly than usual to get the work done. And so that's what this resolution does. It authorizes that, which is allowed under state law. And then it also authorizes the purchasing agent to sign the contract once it is formalized and vetted through the county attorney's office.
So both of these are, without the competitiveness, statutory requirements because of the COVID pandemic emergency?
That's right. But they have, they have gone out and gotten informal bids, and followed the advice of Deloitte in doing that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And item G, which is Dr. Adi Poor, Health Department request, and there's a series of these. I don't know if Dr. Poor is here.
No, she is not.
Good morning, board members. Tim Kelso from the Douglas County Health Department.
Tim, you are so mild-mannered, you don't, I want to make sure we hear everything you have to say, so, right? No, you can leave your mask on, but right into the microphone.
Lean into what he says.
There you go, there you go. Thank you.
Okay. Tim Kelso, Douglas County Health Department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So regarding, number one, the agreement from the Department of, Nebraska Department of Environmental and Energy. I think that's probably a different name, but regarding ambient air monitoring, $150,000 budgeted. Could you explain a little bit about that particular item? We did, I think, authorize millions of dollars for the Health Department under the CARES Act. Is this part of that?
No, sir. This is, this is merely a renewal of a grant that we've had from the state. The Health Department, in our air quality lab, monitors a variety of things. And that lab is part of the national encore sites. But the PM 2.5, is, PM is particulate matter, 2.5 is the size. And so they're talking about 2.5 micrometer, micrometer in diameter. So if you consider the average hair, human hair, is 70, and this is 2.5. So a single hair is about 30 times larger than this particulate. And as a consequence, the problem with 2.5 is it's so small, it can get into your lungs and cause a lot of problems. So it's one of the PMs, particulate matters, that the Health Department monitors for regularly. And this is merely an extension of that program by the state.
Thank you. And the second one, amendment with Archangel Security Services to increase funding and extension of COVID testing operations, $35,907. Is that CARES money?
Yes. And, and item two is, goes hand in hand with item seven.
I'm having difficulty hearing this.
I'm sorry. Item two goes hand in hand with item seven. Two is the traffic control and security, and seven is the services, who was in agreement with UNMC. Both of these were in relation to the 50th and G testing, which is completed. So this is just after the fact. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Eric, thank you.
Any other questions or comments to the consent agenda? If not, I would ask for the vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Been a while since we've had a seven-zero vote. Nice. Recognition proclamations. We are honoring Walter Cummings, retiring from the Department of Corrections after 24 years of service. I have a motion and a second. I don't see Walter here. Our kids went to school together at King, and I got to know Walter better than them. Commissioner Boyle.
I'd like to mention what a spectacular employee Mr. Cummings is. I was looking forward to seeing him. And he's a, kind of a small guy, I think, isn't he, Mike? I like to stand next to him.
I don't, I don't think I should comment.
I like to stand next to him in pictures. That's all I'm saying. He's really, just a really pleasant person, and had the right attitude for corrections, which is you start off with respect and remembering that the people who are in the facility are your neighbors. They're from here. And so, yeah, consequences, situations, put people in, in corrections, and sometimes it's just bizarre how they end up there. So he always treated people with respect. He always treated people with respect, a very kind man. So I, when you see him, tell him I, I said that about him. I really respect him.
I will pass that along, Commissioner, and I, you know, Walt, Walt was the founder of the African-American Correctional Officers Association.
Yes.
I've, during my almost two years now as director, I've leaned on his wisdom many times. He was always very level-headed and very balanced.
Yep.
And constructive in his approach, so he, he will be missed.
Really a great guy. And I, when he started that and got involved and stuff, we, it was welcomed, and he did a great job. He's a great person to work with. Can't say anything better about him. Just lots of happiness in retirement.
And I want to move things quickly, but I, I, I just, no, 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 because I'm going to just add to that. He's been there 24 years. He has seen the culture shift that has occurred at the jail. The jail is such a different operation and how it's run now compared to what it was 24 years ago. It is so much more professional, built on universal respect. And, and I think Walt has been a good part, a great part of the improvements that we have seen occur at, at Corrections. He should be very proud of his legacy.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Who made the, I got the second from Commissioner Boyle, but who made the motion? Commissioner Rogers? Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Oh, and Mike, we do have, if you want to present this film, could we please vote? I, I do have a resolution. If you would give that to Walt, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
I should wait, make sure we pass it.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a resolution honoring the life of John Holcomb, a volunteer for the Nebraska State Patrol Motor Vehicle Assistance. John Holcomb, I, this is a program call that MAPPA helps, has helped overseas, the Metro Motor Assist Program. All volunteers, basically retired State Patrol people. John Holcomb was also a Marine, Purple Heart recipient from Vietnam. I mean, just a class act. I went to their dinner last year where they honored the different volunteers for the MAMA program, and what a great bunch of people. Unfortunately, the volunteers are aging, and the program may have to be phased out, and it's no longer operating on the Iowa side. It's only on the Nebraska side of the interstate now. Their handful of volunteers are getting older, and they will probably end up being replaced by paid staff. Unfortunately, John Holcomb is the first fatality ever in that program. He was killed while removing some debris from the highway. What a tragic loss for Mr. Holcomb and for the program. Now, having said that, I would make the motion myself to approve item B, honoring John Holcomb. Questions or comments to that? Commissioner Boyle?
I'd just like to say that we have been in touch with his widow and, and his family. And they're not prepared to appear today, but they will be coming in when it's, when they're able. And he was really performing such terrific work for so many years. So I too want to add my thoughts and let them know that we admire what he did. And, you know, it was a tragic event, and our, our sympathy is with the family.
Very good. Thank you. Could we please vote on item B?
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Item C, resolution in support of the recent Supreme Court decision related to protection of LGBTQ workers from discrimination. It says Board of Commissioners, but I know better, Mike.
Well, I, I asked that this be put on. I've been really kind of pushing for this for quite a while. It's very important, you know, the city took a big step several years ago and ended discrimination in hiring of people who have other sexual orientations. And so I, we have not been able to get it through here, although I think we passed a few things. We've done some things to help them on, on several things with health insurance and so forth for employees. But this is in step with what the U.S. Supreme Court decided on treating people equally without regard to their sexual orientation, who they love, who they live with. And it really goes to making this a much more acceptable, accepting community, and it's really important. And so when I asked the resolution be drawn up, or the. And so when I asked the resolution be drawn up, or the motion, I said, you know, let other commissioners know that if they wish to be on it, to go ahead and add them right on in. And so that's what's happened. There are several commissioners that include me, so there's enough of them that this is pretty much a very supported step we're taking. So I would make the motion to approve if I could.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Borgson to support item 3C. Questions or comments? Then could we please vote?
Motion passes seven to zero.
I really want to thank all of you for doing this. This is really a very, very important step to respect others. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention and putting it on the agenda. Citizen comments? Would anybody care to address the Board of Commissioners on anything that is not on the agenda? This is your opportunity to do so. Good morning, Larry.
Good morning.
Hi, Larry.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm going to try to put a little more humor into things this morning. But this story I'm going to tell you about how our system worked for me this last week and another gentleman. It's funny, but it isn't. Last week, sitting right back there was a gentleman that I met out front. Said he had an appointment with one of the city council people last week, and he was going to speak at the city council meeting. I said, "Well, I'll be there." He apparently was homeless, claimed to be a veteran, 20 years' service, and then served in the Pentagon under Colin Powell. We had a lot of conversations out there for a little bit. Then I decided, instead of him carrying his blanket and his pillow and his heavy coat around with him in here and outside all day long, that I'd offer him a ride home, and I'd put his stuff in the car until it was over, which I did. And we had more conversations and lunch. He came up here with me for the city council meeting. He sat for a while. The way he talked, he was going to be a presenter. Well, nobody called his name. He was on medications. He couldn't sleep, so he passed out. I asked him if he needed to go. He said, "No, but I'll meet you outside." So he waited three hours more outside for a ride to the Open Door Mission. During all this time in the day, he was telling me about the help that he was not getting and that he was trying to get a bus ticket home to Rockford, Illinois for a doctor appointment the next morning, and nobody would help him. Yet he's staying at the Open Door Mission. And he has a counselor there. And supposedly can't get help from the counselor, and the counselor's not there to talk to him at that time of day and probably won't be until 10 o'clock the next morning. He asked if I could be there with him. The answer was yes. 10 o'clock. Well, it didn't happen. So I get a call from him later that night. He's maybe going to sleep on the street again. He'd been sleeping over by the Carter Lake Airport, I mean, Lake, supposedly. But well, then why am I dropping him off at the Open Door Mission? And they lay him in the door. Supposedly, he's going to stay there. All of a sudden, he's not. And he needs a ride to his doctor appointment in the morning, St. Well Out North 72nd. So somebody must have talked to him. Of course, here's maybe a case of mental illness, okay? So I don't know what all the real facts are. So I get a call, and I went out, picked him up at the hospital later on in the morning, took him down to 50th and Dodge to get his prescription filled and a shot. Well, in the process of all that, I got to look at some of his papers because I had to help him. He had been discharged from somewhere else here in Omaha not too long ago in July, sleeping in the Carter Lake and maybe going over to get meals at Open Door Mission, and then I don't know. But counselor's not helping him, or are they helping him? I don't know. It's almost like this whole thing was staged. So I take him back to the Open Door Mission, drop him off, had a brief conversation with the counselors there. "Oh, yeah, they're going to help him." And I believe it was that same afternoon, later on, I get home, and I get a call. Doesn't know what to do. He's at the Salvation Army, 25th and Dodge. "Well, what are you doing there?" "They kicked me out." I said, "Well, sit tight. Don't cause any trouble. I'll be down in a few minutes." I called 911, told them who I was, where I was going, and why. But I was first going to stop at the Salvation Army on 33rd and Coming. Well, of course, it's that time of day where there isn't any supervisors available, and nobody knows anything. And, "Oh, they don't do that kind of thing at 33rd and Coming." "Okay, slam down. Thank you, ma'am." So I called 911 again, explained I was on my way down to 25th and Farm, and why. Apparently, it was a different 911 person. And I said, "I don't know that it's a medical crisis, but you might have the police there that I had talked to earlier." They knew I was coming. I get down there, and there was nobody there. And here's this gentleman with probably two collars that's full of belongings dumped.
Can we kind of bring this to a conclusion, please? Your five minutes are up.
He was dumped on the steps of the Salvation Army. "I'm going to finish. You can kick me out if you want." He was dumped by the Open Door Mission, I guess, or somebody. You would have had to have a bus to get him and all that stuff there. So I tried to talk to him, and I went inside and asked him, "Well, can't we get this gentleman some help? Isn't there a supervisor around, or can you give me a phone number?" "Oh, we can't do that. Can't do that. We're nobody available." "And we've dealt with this guy before or something?" "Well, what's wrong with the system? Get him off the streets one way or another, people. That's what all this money is being spent for, isn't it?" So I waited till the police finally pulled up. "Will you please send him?" "They weren't there when I got there. They were talked to before. They knew I was coming. They weren't here, or they left. What's the story? But please send him out here again. This guy needs to be off the street." I also called the VA.
Can we wrap this up, please? You're way over your time.
Okay. I also called the VA. I think maybe they finally got him some help. But here's the final seconds, okay? Police came. When I tried to tell them who I was, they said, "We're not talking to you, sir. Back off, sir." They didn't want any information about me or that gentleman, what had gone on. Rescue squad shows up. Fire truck shows up. I'm on the other side of the street because I said, "I'm getting out of the situation here." Nobody wanted to talk to me then either. What happens? They get in their trucks, and they leave. They just left. And they left that gentleman laying right there in front of everybody driving past 25th and Farm. Thank you, Douglas County Health and Human Services, City Health and Human Services. And I basically support first responders and police, but something was not done correctly here. Where was the co-responder that's supposed to be riding in them police cars? Where is that person that you've identified and hired to be a person that says, "Oh, that guy's mentally ill"? They might have taken me in too and assessed me and got me some help. Maybe that's why they didn't do anything with anybody that day. They didn't want to deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
Anybody else wish to share during citizen comments? If not...
Actually, I want to speak to this last issue because I have some insight.
We've got strange rules here, Marty.
Right here?
Well, that's a good one. But that wasn't what I was referring to. We aren't... We do not respond to citizen comments because it's not on the agenda, and the county attorney believes we should not get into a discussion without placing it on the agenda so the world knows we're going to.
So I'm out of order?
A little bit. Thank you, Marty. Okay, I will move next to presentation. And Marty, you don't have to go far because you are next. The CARES Act update. The first item for our consideration is Douglas County allocating $25 to $30 million in CARES Act funds to the City of Omaha for COVID-19-related expenses, subject to prior approval of these expenses by the State of Nebraska. And I would ask the representatives for the city, if you would lead off the discussion for us, first justify to me that you need the money, if you would, to me and the world. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Steve Curtis, the Finance Director for City of Omaha. And under Section 1243 of the mask mandate, I'll remove this just for this brief time.
We'll keep people six feet away from you.
Yeah, I don't have a tape measure, but it looks like we're good. Under the rules, and we've talked about this before here in the chamber...
Can you talk to him in the microphone closer, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Under the rules, or under the guidance that we've talked about before here in the chamber, one of the things that the CARES Act allowed for was presumptive costs for police, fire, and then anybody who's substantially dedicated to the COVID response. And so under that, we put together our response for March through May. And in there, it has about $64 million worth of expenses for those couple of months. We've worked with the, as you probably know, the Governor's Office, and they've clarified and adopted those same guidance for that same period of time. And so we, after our discussions with you, will put these costs into the portal so that everybody can see what they are. And hopefully, that explains that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We all know that revenue loss is not a reimbursable expense. Everybody gets that. However, revenue loss is still a very real part of your world, and you're budgeting and you're keeping the city functioning. Do you have any kind of estimates of... And I know it's not a reimbursable expense, but as I say, I'm still interested. Do you have kind of figures for what your revenue loss has been, is projected to be?
No, I appreciate that question, and I appreciate your clarification that that really is not connected to this particular issue. But just as an academic exercise to understand where the city is, I think when I appeared, excuse me, I think when I appeared before you before, I think our estimates, and this was way early in March, or it may have been May, but certainly well into the pandemic, but way before we had any real information. I think our estimate was for our total fund loss to be over $100 million. As time went on, we clarified that to about $99 million. And now that we have property taxes, sewer tax, the two that we weren't sure about, now that those are in, and they're coming in quite a bit better than we had anticipated, our total revenue losses are now approximately $75 million.
Okay. And the governor has said that the state will match. If we, Douglas County, come in somewhere between $25 and $30 million for our allocation, the governor has said the state will match it.
Right.
So it's like doubling whatever we give you up to that $30 million max.
And that's my understanding as well. Obviously, we've had quite a few impacts. We haven't had a fire class or a police class since this began. Our numbers, particularly in fire, we've had about half of our firefighters have had either a COVID-positive response or a COVID exposure requiring quarantine. We've occasionally had, thankfully not that often, we've had a few days where rigs were out of service. We just couldn't get enough staff in. So once we have funding back in, it would be, it behooves us all to get at least a fire class, and then we'll do a police class once we're sure we understand what our revenue looks like for next year.
You actually canceled the fire class in the middle of the class, I believe. You had...
It wasn't in the middle, but it was close to getting started.
Okay, yeah.
We had actually had a few folks, unfortunately, that moved to this area from other places in anticipation of that class.
Oh, golly.
And we were unable to. I think we used them in some capacity and then let them go, and we ran out of funds.
Okay, thank you. We have several commissioners with questions or comments. Commissioner Morgan?
Marty, first, if he's in a position that he wants to come up there, I don't want to interrupt him. And I can ask my question right after that. I saw that he is poised to come right up.
Marty Belec, Mayor's Office, 1819 Farnor Street. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I was going to ask if the request from Steve and the city, your Finance Director and yourself, is if the county could give $30 million. Is that the request that's being asked for today?
That is.
Okay. I just wanted to be certain that I understood, and I thank you. And I know I talked to you a little bit about some of the situation, so that's appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks. We have this one side of one piece of paper as documentation for this $25 to $30 million request from the city. I'm not saying I'm not sympathetic to your plight, but is there any documentation available from the city relative to how you would spend $25 to $30 million of CARES funds from Douglas County?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. Yeah, on our website, we had originally provided you a document, but it was just estimates in a key to about $75 million, I believe, back in May, I want to say. This is still on our website. We'd be happy to get you copies of this. It's the documentation for the $64 million worth of current reimbursable expenses we had from March through May.
You haven't submitted that to Douglas County in support of your request?
I believe Chairman Duda had it, but we'd be happy to give you that.
That'd be great. Like I said, not that I'm unsympathetic. I know that the city's in dire straits here. But we have lots and lots of discussions on items from the CARES Act, way smaller than $25 to $30 million. And people come before us when they ask with PowerPoints and documentation backup. It's just standard best practices for government. I guess I'm a little taken aback that there's one side of one piece of paper.
I'm not sure what you're referring to, the one side piece of it.
I'm asking, where are you going to spend the money specifically in the city budget so that we can make an informed decision relative to authorize this? I'm not unsympathetic to the ask. I'm just asking for some detail about what you would do with $25 to $30 million matched by the $25 to $30 million from the state. Is that not clear?
That is clear. That's outside of the... That's outside of this document. We've documented our reimbursable CARES expenses, which are police and fire reimbursement for employees who are substantially dedicated. That would go back into the general fund and begin to fund some of the things that, probably a police class, a fire class, pay for the zoo, pay for UNMC's $3.5 million, open libraries, open community centers, open our ice rink. But that's, again, that's out. Those plans aren't required in this document.
I understand, and I don't know what document you're referring to. I've never seen it. And so, but I'm interested in what you're saying because if I hear you correctly, in addition to reimbursing the city for, you know, legitimate expenses in the public safety arena of police and fire, you're talking about other city services that have been suspended. Say, for instance, the libraries, that would be also restarted with these CARES funds. Is that correct?
I believe they would, yes.
Okay. So, you know, the outline that you gave is as specific as I've seen relative to the ask. And, you know, I guess that's what I would ask for, if you could provide us with that just so that we could have an informed basis for our consideration of your ask, which, again, I am not unsympathetic to. I'm just asking for details relative to where you would spend it. I've had, and I'm sure that my colleagues have had, a lot of people reaching out to us, for instance, on the library front. So OPS isn't holding schools. Kids can't go to the library. We have a rent assistance program run under CARES that only allows for applications electronically. And a lot of people don't have computers at home and don't have Wi-Fi connection. They go to the library. Well, when those are closed, I mean, it has that effect on a wider community that's not getting services educational or assistance-wise that they would want. So hearing you say, "Yeah, we'll reopen the libraries as well," is very, very good news. And, you know, the more of that that we could have, the better. So when could you provide us with that?
Well, I'm sure you can appreciate the fact that the CARES Act was very specific in not tying revenue losses and other city services to your actual reimbursable expenses. So outside of this, I'd be happy to give you... So, outside of this, I'd be happy to give you a document that says, here's what I think would be restarted based on that, but I think we need to be careful not to tie those two issues together.
Sure, and, and, and believe me, I am very sensitive to that. I'm not talking about revenue at all, I'm talking about expenses. And so, I've been saying for months that I thought that the public safety people were impacted by the COVID pandemic and would be a reimbursable expense. Well, that's great that the Governor's finally come around to that point of view, and we're going to do that. The same with these others, these are expenses, not revenue questions, expenses that you are going to expend CARES money on.
Right, remember, but I think you are mixing apples and oranges. The CARES Act is pretty specific about which expenses are reimbursable, and we have those detailed here. Some of the things you're talking about are how we may spend that money are not reimbursable under the CARES Act, and so, we have to be careful not to mix apples and oranges here.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I did look up, and I, when you came last time, you had a lot of papers and so forth, and it was very helpful, but I do, I do see the, on the city site, the, what you're talking about, so it is, it is readable, but I think what, usually what happens is we get the paper like you did last time, but it's not any big deal, I've got a laptop and I see.
No, we'd be happy to get you copies.
Right, and I was aware of it too, because we've talked about it, and I've talked to the Mayor's Office about this. I think you're totally in line, I really appreciate your coming and sharpening the pencil on it, it helps a great deal. And my view of this is that we are partners with you, we do, we work hand in hand on so many things with you, and whether it's JAG funding, whether it's, you know, police and fire and all the rest, 911, all those things, the correction facility, we have a very, very close working relationship with the city. And with the exception of the farmer to my left, all of us live in the city, and we appreciate your services a great deal. So, I'm, I'm very much in favor of your request, and I intend at the time to make a motion to give you the 30 million. I think that you're, you need it, you've proved your case, and I think we, we need to be your partner and, and do this, and so, I'm very much in favor of it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll say something I don't often say, well put.
Thanks.
You won't hear me say that again. Commissioner Rogers.
Got to record that.
So, Steve, your first, your first request, MECA was in there, is MECA in this request?
No, part of what we did, and that's a good question, part of how we got from the $75 million that we originally showed you, there were two main things. MECA, we still may have over a $2 million expense related to the cancellation of the College World Series. We are negotiating currently with the NCAA to figure out who and which parties might be responsible for some of those expenses for things that were canceled. But to your point, we clarified this down, the things that were actually spent during that period. The MECA expense over $2 million has not been resolved yet, but is not in here. And then, we have hotel expenses related to the COVID shutdown that were also removed from this document, but it's currently at about $4 million, probably will grow to $6 by the end of the year. And we're still working with the owners of the hotel to figure out what their intentions are.
Okay, so, I thought I heard you just say the zoo was in this request?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Pardon me? When I was asked what we might spend the money on, which, again, was outside of this CARES document, I was asked to speculate about where some of this money might be spent. Zoo has not been paid to date.
So, because the zoo's here to date, are you not, or are you, are you or are you not, because the zoo's here for a request today?
The zoo is not in this request. No, and that's what I've tried to be very careful, that there are very specific guidelines in the CARES Act. This is only CARES reimbursable dollars. Commissioner Kavanaugh asked us to kind of speculate where some of this money might be used, and some of that will more than likely be used to true up a number of things that we haven't paid, but those are not reimbursable expenses, are not included in our request.
I know, and I hear you, so I just want to make sure I heard, so you speculated that it was, but now you're clarifying that it's not, the zoo will not be paid out.
I, I never speculated that's in this document, the zoo is not in this document, so we're clear, UNMC's not in this document, and all the other things I speculated with Commissioner Kavanaugh about are also not in this document.
Okay, thanks.
MECA is part of what the Omaha Community Foundation, the $10 million that we gave them, MECA is intended to be funded out of that.
I believe you're speaking about MECA's general expenses related to the arena. The expenses that Commissioner Rogers were referencing were originally in here, it's related to the cancel, the COVID cancellation of the College World Series, related to TD Mary Trade Park, but again, we're working with the NCAA to figure out which parties might cover that.
Thank you. Were you done?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
I certainly want to support this, and I know Commissioner Boyle mentioned he'd make the motion, I would have made it had he not said that, but second it to go ahead with the $30 million. And I would like to say that I'd like to see the city and county work closer than we have in recent months, years, and I hope that we can put forth, you know, a greater effort into that.
I think we'd appreciate that greatly as well.
I know I visit with Marty quite often, and I've appreciated that a lot, but I do hope that this can be the beginning
Right.
of a closer relationship with the city. And I think I said maybe six months ago to Marty, and I also said it to the Mayor, that I'm always in favor of the city and county working closer together. And I've shared that with my good friend, Mike Boyle, and I know he agrees with me on that. So, Steve, I know you and Joe LaBrenns have a good relationship, Finance Director, and I've been lucky enough for 10 years to be the finance person with Joe, and certainly appreciate that effort on your part and Joe's part, too. So, Mike, I'll let you make that motion if you want.
Right ahead.
Out of courtesy.
Right ahead.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and allow the city the $30 million, as long as Deloitte approves all this, which is what we do with every motion we make, so it's clear, we're not changing the rules for this one, and we'll work toward that to get it done.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'd second that motion.
I would, thank you both, and I would clarify that the, what's, what's on the agenda, and that this is, I believe, what the intent of the motion is, also says it's subject to prior approval of these expenses by the state.
Right.
And, and, and they're also going through Deloitte, all the hoops will be jumped through properly. All right, we have a motion before us, further questions or comments now, to the motion before us to allocate $30 million of CARES Act funding to the City of Omaha. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Mr. Curtis, I will look for that documentation, I'm on the city's website now and it doesn't immediately appear, so if you could forward that to me and the.
Certainly, it's on the, it's in the Finance Department's section if you go there, but yeah, we'd be happy to forward down to everybody's office today, this printed copy of this document.
If you could forward that to us, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, further questions or comments? Then could we please vote?
One moment, please.
While you're doing that, I want to thank Commissioner Kraft for coming back for this vote. This was, this is an important vote, and thank you for making the effort to join us for this, Commissioner Kraft.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Oh, that's wonderful, great.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Maybe we really are partners after all.
Yeah.
This is good, this is good.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Don't spend it all in one place.
We'll see you at the casino.
Okay.
Oh, well.
Item two, motion to rescind the previous board approval for the purchase of a mobile command center by the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. As we know, they were unable to guarantee delivery of this unit during the calendar, this calendar year, and therefore, it doesn't qualify, and the sheriff has withdrawn his request for this, it would be appropriate for this board to. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Borgeson, to approve item two, rescinding the approval of the purchase of a mobile command center.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgeson.
I, I think for maybe Monday and the following Tuesday, because we don't meet next week, I'd like to talk about using those funds and actually rounding it up to $2 million for mental health services. Commissioner Boyle has long time talked about trying to figure out as well a way to use these for mental health. So, if we could earmark, if you will, those funds, and again, rounding it up to the $2 million, we can work on a plan to bring back to the board during our CARES Act Monday morning meetings and our Tuesday meetings. One of the things that I, we've talked about, and it was actually brought to our attention by a citizen named Paul Philman, I think I'm saying his name right, Philman or Folman, he has a program that he talks very highly about, and I'm going to pass these around to everybody. It's called the Kahoots Program, which is modeled out of Eugene, Oregon, and it's what I like to call a mobile crisis team on steroids, because we right now have a mobile crisis team to address mental health, but it has to be activated by law enforcement. This does not, it's non-emergent, it's a separate team, and it's made up of mental health professionals. I've passed out a brochure and a little summary on it, and what I'll do is meet with my, Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Morgan from the Finance Department, and Sherry Glassnapp and Patty Jurjevich from Region Six, to also see what other programs or services that we might be able to either build capacity to or start, i.e., like the Kahoots Program. One of the things that we do have to answer, and I'm hoping I'll be able to, is how are we going to sustain these programs or services that we begin the funding, the funding for? So, anyway, it's, it's a very needed effort to, again, address mental health in our community. This is just one program, if others have other programs or services they'd like us to look at, please bring them forward to us so that we can bring it to the board within the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgeson. I, I will point out also, we, we had scheduled this morning, Patty, you mentioned Patty Jurjevich with the region, and Dr. Howard Liu of the Med Center, and, and I was very much looking forward to their update on the Region Six psychiatric emergency facility. I want to give them the time that they deserve, the time and attention, this is an important topic. And we ended up with so much on the agenda today, I very much appreciate them holding off for a week so that we can give them the time and attention that I think they deserve. So, I hope to have more follow-up discussion on this.
Absolutely, I mean, they were very accommodating to that and understood, and so, we'll have it on next week, and I think it's geared up at a specific time again because of, you know, obviously, Dr. Liu's schedule, but I think it's a long term.
They'll be joining us by Zoom.
They'll be joining us by Zoom.
Great, very good. All right, thank you, Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle.
I want to take a moment to recognize Commissioner Borgeson's leadership. She has always been out front on these issues that deliver services directly to our, the people of our community and those who are in need. This action today is really a great step forward, and I think it's very responsive to what we've heard on the street when people are protesting what has happened in Minneapolis and so forth, and most recently in Kenosha. This is not defunding anybody, what this is, is taking our resources and directing them in a positive way to give help to people who need it. When they call 911, they need sometimes things more than a person, you know, a law enforcement officer showing up, what they need is help, mental health, and sometimes there's family disturbances that could be quieted without, without that. So, anyway, this is a great step forward, I really appreciate the leadership of Commissioner Borgeson, she has been an ally in trying to find the funding, and finally, this came up, and so, and Commissioner Morgeson, Morgan on the, I was going to say Morgeson, Commissioner Morgan on the, as a co-chair of the Finance, it all came together, so I really appreciate it, Marianne, you're a real leader, and thank you for your leadership again.
Thank you. Okay, item three under presentations is the CARES rental assistance update from Melissa Seawick.
Did we vote? Did we vote on that?
On the.
To, to rescind, yes, but Commissioner, the second part, I mean, there was no vote, it was just.
There's no action item beyond rescinding the.
Yeah.
We're not, I mean, you're not proposing anything today, are you, Marianne?
Well, I was going to just say that we make a motion to move that funding to mental health.
Let's do it.
And we'll bring back the plan.
Do we know that it qualifies for CARES Act funding?
We would have to check all that out.
Oh, I'm sure it does, as a result of the COVID, but whatever you're comfortable with.
Yeah, yeah, we'll still have to take action, I, and, and that isn't on the agenda, I, I think the discussion is.
We'll bring it, we'll bring it back on the next Tuesday, but I think we can talk a little bit more and have those discussions with Deloitte at our Monday, before our Monday CARES Act meeting, so we have a little bit more detail.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Marianne.
Okay, rental assistance update. Good morning, Melissa.
Good morning, Melissa Seawick, Director of General Assistance, and this is the report as of yesterday. Again, Douglas County CARES rental assistance program provides funds to assist low to moderate income, 100% AMI or below eligible county residents with unpaid rent due to a COVID-19 related hardship. The maximum benefit for this rental assistance is $4,000. We have received 2,022 valid applications, we've received 100, or 1,371 landlords that have completed their portion of their application, which is 68%, 942 applications have been processed, and then we are currently working on 401 of the 429 remaining applications. 651 applications are awaiting response from the landlord, which is 32% of our applications. We just received, I've been working with dot com, we've received a report from them, and what we did is, because we were seeing a lot of the email addresses are not correct, and so, like I said, if there was just a typo, we're not able to tell if that was incorrect, but if they're, they have the applicant's email address and what they posted for the landlord's email address was the same, we got a report for that, and that is almost 300 applications. So, we're going to go ahead and go through an email, all of those applicants, to let them know that we need an updated landlord email, so hopefully, we will be able to get all of those applications processed. The monthly rent requests have ranged from $25 to $2,600, and the average monthly rent request has been $858.72. This is the zip codes of the applications we have received. I just wanted to note, this is the first day that we've received the zip code map or the, the report, and it does include all of the drafted versions and the duplicates, so moving forward, we are getting that corrected, but that is why the total is higher than the total of applications received. I've highlighted some of the, the higher percentage of the zip codes as well. Our biggest one is 68111. The months of assistance requested, 16% requested April forward, 11% May forward, 13% June forward, 26% July forward, and 33% August forward. As of today, we have opened up September assistance as well, over the past, well, since last Wednesday, I have emailed everybody that has been approved and asked them if they were still in need of September assistance, and if they were, we were manually entering in September assistance as well. For those folks that have already been approved, we are working with dot com, and we should have it ready today to test, to email out everybody who has been approved, and asking them if they need September assistance as well, so they don't have to go back in and complete the full application, they just have to attest that they are still in need, and we'll go ahead and reauthorize September assistance for those individuals. As far as denials, there's been 650 applications that have been denied, 16 of those for being over the 100% AMI for their household size, 66 for insufficient documentation, 513 for insufficient documentation and unable to verify. insufficient documentation and unable to verify the financial hardship, and 55 have been unable to verify financial hardship due to COVID-19. And again, those are typically the folks that were receiving the extra $600 a week on unemployment. Applicants can reapply for assistance, and email notifications are sent to the tenants, notifying them of their denial and reason why, and they are also able to reach out to us if they want some more specific details. We have approved 282 applications. We have just over $536,000. Again, this was as of yesterday, and that's 272 households. We have 10 households that were awaiting payment, and again, I was just waiting to see if they needed September assistance. I'm giving them approximately 24 hours to reply because I don't want to hold off on their payment because we can't issue it in the future as well. Approval amounts have ranged from $25 to $4,000, and the average assistance approval is just over $1,900. Again, here is the website information, it's www, excuse me, www.douglascounty-ne.gov. We can find information on the Rental Assistance Program and the Utility Assistance Program, and then if you want to call our help desk, it's 402-444-7230. That's my phone number, 7232.
Thank you, Melissa, for that. So we've allocated a little over half a million so far of the 10 million available.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments for Melissa?
Jim, Chair.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And thanks for this. Please send that along electronically, it's great information. So are any of the landlords refusing to sign because they have to promise not to evict?
We haven't heard that message. The message that we've heard for landlords that don't want to participate in it is just that that's in their lease, that they don't work with any assistance programs. We've tried to explain it to them, it's just like if you receive your stimulus, and then they just don't want to keep that particular person, and this is their way to evict them. But that's been very few. Most landlords want the money and want to help their clients. It seems like a lot of them have been going above and beyond for their tenants.
So, you know, we've got a little over 2,000 apps, of which 282 have been approved, I guess that's running a little over 10% approval, 650 denied, and then the balance, I guess, are being processed or awaiting landlord response. Is there some workaround that we could do? I mean, somebody's perfectly qualified under our guidelines, it's just that their landlord, as you indicated, may not want to participate. Is there some workaround that we could do in order to get them the rent assistance? It's not their fault that their landlord doesn't want to participate.
Our approval rate is actually 30% based on the applications we're able to process. Second, we don't even look at an application until we get that landlord's information, so I can't tell you whether that person is an ideal candidate or not. Like I said, we have almost 300 applications that had incorrect email addresses, so I think the response of the landlords have been great, especially working with our department, seeing the landlord's response. I've been very happy, and especially knowing almost half of those are just because of error, and then who knows how many of them are just a typo. So we're continuing to do what we can to reach out to those. But again, just because they're waiting on their landlord, we don't look at that application until everything's complete, and as far as the denials go, I stated it last week or the week before, just because somebody's denied doesn't mean they are going to be approved later. Some of these are going to be flat-out denials, no matter how many times they apply, but we are trying to do our best. Like I said, there's 90% of these applications we have our hands on, we're trying to communicate with them. There comes a time if we're not getting what we need, we have to deny and ask them to reapply, and they can reapply for the same months, and that's not going to affect any of their benefits.
Great. Well, I know that we're moving as fast as we can, and, you know, this is kind of a work in progress, so you heard earlier maybe about the possible addition of the libraries back to people's availability to get online and make applications. That would also maybe bring up the question again of having an actual application, a physical application, analog application available to them. Is that something that we could explore? I've gotten two or three constituent requests that don't have access to Wi-Fi or don't have a computer.
We have numerous organizations in the community that are helping with applications, and myself, I have received paper applications, and I have contacted the person, and I've done them myself. So the quickest and most efficient way is to do that online, that's how we prefer. Again, we have those organizations, some of them are doing it via the phone, other ones are setting up the appointments. We have gotten some in the mail. I've worked with landlords, that's typically where we're seeing the most issues as far as the not being, it's not, they have internet access, they just aren't sure what to do, and so we've walked them through that, or we've done it on their behalf. So I really don't see that as being a very big issue. I think that we are communicating this with the community. I did email blasts to, you know, Legal Aid, all of the different school systems, all of the city clerks within our county. We're reaching people. I think just the need isn't that $35 million that kept getting talked about initially, and I think that need's going to continue throughout the remainder of the year.
And I appreciate it. I've actually stirred them to your phone number, and they get a, you know, live person on the other end, and so I think that is a very effective way to get them in regardless of whether or not they have internet access or a computer of their own. And I know that you've been on the front line of that, and so thank you for the, you know, hundreds of, not thousands of calls that you personally have fielded, you're doing a good work.
Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions or comments for Melissa? Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, Melissa, I want to ask, on the denials, the bottom one is there are 55 who are unable to verify financial hardship due to COVID-19. How do you verify that she had a hardship because of that? What do you ask?
We just need proof of income before COVID, so before...
You need what?
Proof of income before COVID, so before March 17th, and then after. So that's typically pay stubs, letter from your employer, unemployment information. Like I said, with those folks, majority of them that we're seeing are that they were receiving the additional $600 unemployment, which was putting them over their income. They were in a better off situation after COVID than they were prior to COVID. That said, as of August, that assistance has gone away. They're no longer receiving that additional 600 per week, so they can reapply if they still have a need, and we have already had applicants that were denied originally, and then they have reapplied as of August and been approved.
Also, there's a lawyer that I know who does real estate and represents a lot of landlords. He called me some time ago when we were working on trying to stop evictions, and I'll be glad to give, his name is Gene Echols, and I'll give you his phone number. If I could pull it up on my phone without dialing it, I would give it to you now. But Gene will be, he's offering to help anyway, and he does work with landlords, knows quite a few of them, so he might be someone on the inside who would kind of come in and move them along.
Absolutely.
Okay, good deal. And keep it up, you're doing a fine job. Have you talked to any other, have you talked to any nonprofits to try to, a lot of times they know who these folks are, I mean, they're people who are, we in the business call them frequent flyers with a great affection.
And we're in that business as well, working for general assistance. So we are in communication with all of them, and again, it's, I think it's kind of deceiving that all of the people that have been denied are, if we would have done something differently, they would have been approved. That's not necessarily the case, and we, again, we're reaching out to them, and it's not that we're not able to get ahold of them, it's just the documentation isn't there or it's being provided too late, but they can absolutely reapply, and we're getting those processed fairly quickly.
Okay, well, if there's any tools that we can help you with, let us know.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thanks a lot, and keep it up.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four under the CARES Act update, resolution to allocate $5 million in CARES Act funds to the Omaha Henry Dorley Zoo for COVID-19 related expenses.
Motion to approve.
I will second that. I would invite, we've got two of the big shots from the zoo here, that remind us.
Yeah, we're the elephant in the room, Dennis Pate.
So to speak.
Dennis Pate, President and CEO, Omaha's Henry Dorley Zoo and Aquarium, and I'd like to just back up just a little bit and just tell you a little bit more about what the zoo does, because I think most people think it's a wonderful Saturday afternoon with their family, but it does so much more. It's really four parts. We have a school at the zoo, it serves nine area school districts, 120 juniors and seniors from high school. We have a middle school academy, a kindergarten, a pre-K, after-school program that serves 350, and other programs for 142,000 students and teachers. These are teacher workshops, citizen science programs, cleanups for lake and stream, library visits, day camps, classes, and special tours. The other thing we do is we're a conservation organization. We help build sustainability among zoo populations and wild populations. We have five veterinarians on staff, six PhDs, all working to help wildlife on behalf of Omaha and Douglas County and the state. Third is that original thing I talked about, it's the Saturday afternoon visit. So in addition to the people that come, we also want the zoo to be for everybody, and so pre-COVID, we were giving away roughly 40,000 tickets to veterans, social service agencies, libraries, memberships to over 1,000 families. And so these are, what we do is we partner with United Way, and we have identified every third grader in the greater Omaha area is eligible to receive a free membership for a year, their family, not just a ticket, a membership for the entire family. So 1,000 families have taken us up on that, and that is one that is a heartwarmer, to be sure. Lastly, we're an economic driver for this city and county. The expansion and improvement of the zoo is a glowing example of public-private partnership. The private investment in new and expanded facilities has kept the zoo the number one tourist attraction in the state of Nebraska and produced a significant economic benefit to the city, county, and state. We generate about approximately $200 million in economic impact a year, with a high being 267 million in 2016. Our annual attendance has been as high as 2 million, and that was two years in a row. 36% of everybody that comes to the zoo comes from out of state, adding to that economic impact. 68% of the visitors are outside of Omaha and Douglas County, and we have 360,000 people who are represented by 90,000 memberships, so 360,000 people that are members of the zoo that participate in what goes on there. We employ 1,300 people on average per year, so we never qualified for the Main Street Loan Program, which nonprofits didn't qualify for, or the PPP program because we had too many employees. So that was an early problem for us right out of the get-go. It has, the COVID has had a significant negative impact on the financial operation of the zoo. The annual revenue shortfall is projected to be 29 million, that's just on the revenue side, and of course, we've done all kinds of things to help make that up. We have done expense reductions, we have cut salaries for staff, and those are still in effect. We've laid off people initially in March and then again in May, and so we've been able to reduce our expense side pretty heavily. At the same time, unlike a lot of other places, if we closed our doors and did nothing but the essentials, our operating costs would still be just slightly over 16 million. So it's a big fixed cost that we have to bear every year. We're happy to do it, but it is, makes us a little different from a lot of other places. So your consideration is really important. One other closing thing before our Chief Financial Officer comes up, I just wanted to say, beyond all the facts and figures, the zoo over the last six months has been a great alternative for families who just need to plain get out of the house to enjoy a safe environment. Going to the zoo has been part of the lives of people in this county for several generations, and the kids, the grandkids, and the adults miss it a lot and have missed it a lot. And, you know, when you think about just even what's going on here with, we're zoomed in, it's a digital world, the zoo represents that in-person, real, live, living animal experience that you can't get on TV or in a book. It's really important to see jellyfish, to see elephants, sharks, and penguins, we have it all, and it, and they can all be experienced firsthand. For Nebraskans, the zoo is about quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. Commissioner Borgerson.
I just wanted, this is really just a funny comment more than anything. I appreciate everything you said, but you actually could do zooms of the penguins because that would really lift a lot of spirits, just saying.
They're a lot of fun to watch. They're a lot of fun to watch.
Good thoughts.
That's a great idea. We'll look for that, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks for this, and I agree, the zoo's a great asset to our community.
Thank you.
When I was a kid, I actually worked at the zoo, cutting grass in the summer. One of our kids went to the Zoo Academy, which is an excellent, excellent educational opportunity for our children, so thanks for all the good work you do. Just a couple of quick questions. Does the zoo have a foundation?
We do.
And do you know the size of the foundation?
We have six employees who work there at the foundation. It's been, oh, it's probably been 15 or 20 years since it started, and I'm not sure what else you mean by size.
Well, I mean, is it a $100 million foundation? Is it a billion dollar foundation? What's the size of the foundation?
It fluctuates quite a bit, and some of the assets are restricted, some are not, to various things we have around the zoo, some are restricted to the science side, some are restricted to other areas of the zoo, and some are just there to ensure the long-term viability of the zoo. Right now, it stands around 80 million.
Okay. Has the foundation been able to help during this pandemic?
They have, they have pledged 5 million to help us on the operating side.
So 5 million kind of in addition to what you're asking us for, same purpose for those funds?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thanks for that. I mean, we are very, very sympathetic to your plight. You do a lot of good things for our community, and I appreciate you coming down here and giving us this information. Thanks again.
You're welcome. I'd like to introduce Jeremy Eady, who's our Chief Financial Officer, who can provide a little bit more detail if you please.
We'll get to Jeremy in just a minute. I don't know how much detail we really need, but Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I just wanted to, first of all, say, I mean, you are really the lifeblood of this community, it's really terrific, and...
Thank you.
I had the pleasure of, when I was in office, we saw so a lot of building taking place, and I made the remark, it's wonderful that Mutual of Omaha has done this and all this, but we have to feed and take care of their maintenance and all that goes with that, and it was really overbearing, the operations were a killer. And so I asked Barbara Wright, who is a wonderful Chief of Staff for me, and she, I said, go ask Walter Scott if he'll put together a foundation for us and start some funding, and she did, and he did. And of course, we just saw a terrific story on Walter in the World Herald just recently, but that's, that's the, that's where the foundation started. We were desperate because we didn't have, the city didn't have the money to take care of maintaining it, so naturally we passed it on to you, but suggested maybe using the foundation, and I've always enjoyed going there and seeing what happens. It's, you're doing a remarkable job, Dr. Simmons was a godsend as well as you. So appreciate your leadership and keep it up, you're doing a great job, and I'm a huge fan of the zoo. I used to have five kids in town, or 16 grandkids in town, and so I'd buy passes for everybody, and they'd go all, several times during the summer and all that, it was a wonderful experience. So I need to do a little bit more of that, so keep it up.
Come down, we've got new things opening up, we're just trying to finish up the things we've started, and then we're just going to rest for a while and get caught up on our finances.
Well, keep it up, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jeremy, do you have anything to add, or does anybody have questions?
Yeah, I can certainly walk through the summary that we provided if you'd like.
What's a, what's a family membership cost?
160. And there's a discount offered in the spring months to get people to sign up and enjoy the summer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
If you would, a couple of the items that you have, just a little background information would be good.
Jeremy Eady, CFO at Omaha's Henry Dorley Zoo.
Thanks for this. On the total categories of $5.6 million, you've broken it down into two basic subsets. One is reopening and operating costs, that's $1.2 million. So as to the reopening, you're where on that scale right now?
So we were closed March 16th through May 31st, we reopened on June 1st, and then we followed the directive health measures as those evolved over time. So at this point, you know, we've seen steady increases in attendance since that time, our capacity limitations have eased. It started out, we had a 3,000 person in park capacity, that was raised to 10. Essentially, at that same point, we were able to reopen indoor... Essentially, at that same point, we were able to reopen indoor facilities while managing the capacity inside the buildings. So we've continued to see a climb. In June, we were about 31% of budgeted attendance. July, it got to 39, and right now, we're running about 53 in August. So we're continuing to see increases in that, and so some of the revenues associated with that are starting to return.
So these reopening and operating costs that you outlined here for 1.2 million dollars, you've incurred those costs to date, is that right?
Yes, they were incurred or planned between now and December 30.
In terms of developing an operating plan, and then you temperature test all the people working on the construction there, you have a virtual education program. That's online now. That's going.
Yes, yes. You know, Dennis talked about the different groups that we do education for. They have 678 programs that were designed to be delivered in person, and so they had to retool that, you know, writing the scripts, pre-recording pieces of that in order to try to deliver all of that in a virtual environment, not knowing how long we were actually going to be closed.
And then you had to secure all the PPE, cleaning and disinfectant supplies, and building and grounds modifications to meet Department of Health requirements, including development of acrylic barriers and health guidelines, capacity control modifications, and marketing and communication. That's all done. That's all in place right now.
Yes, in place and ongoing through the end of the year.
So if we go to the second part, which is the bulk of this, $4.3 million, proposed capital and equipment projects. Have you incurred these costs to date?
We have not.
Okay. And that's building cameras, sensors for outdoor capacity management, conference system upgrades, installing conference rooms and education spaces, web store development to manage capacity, enhance functionality, mobile radios to enhance distance staff communication, touchless faucets, water closets, towel dispensers, automatic door openers, air handling systems, and assorted controls in the Lead Jungle, WKP, Dome, Lozier Theater.
That's right.
That's all coming up between now and the end of the year.
Those were all planned if funding was going to be available.
Okay. Well, you got your plate full there. So thanks, and thanks for the outline here. We appreciate it.
Yeah, well, we certainly appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Further questions or comments to the motion? Would anybody else like to speak to this before we vote? If not, Mr. Clerk, may we please vote on item four?
Do you have the qualification about approval by?
Um, it's, yeah, it's standard. That these have to, this is contingent on Deloitte's approval of these expenses. Okay, could we please vote?
Motion passes seven to zero.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I wish you well with the zoo. I'm glad you have a foundation to help. I've got to say, and we took the zoo separately, I mean, you guys are so big, you really are the elephant in the room. And so when we put together the nonprofits and said, you go work with the Omaha Community Foundation, I thought it was appropriate that the zoo not be included in that. Their needs just so dwarf everything else in the nonprofit sector here. This is also a backwards way of us providing more help to the city of Omaha. The zoo is owned by the city of Omaha. The zoo is in a world of financial hurt right at the moment, and the city is not in a position to be able to come forward to help you. And so here again, we are blessed with having enough to share and how appropriate it is to put some of this direction.
And I'm not sure they own the zoo. I think they own the land that the zoo is on.
Is that how it works?
I just had to say that. So, yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
The old Deer Park.
Former mayor. Appreciate it.
All right.
Okay.
Good luck, and thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, resolution approving an emergency purchase and directing the Douglas County Purchasing Agent to execute a contract with Let's Get Checked for the purchase of COVID-19 testing kits and lab testing for county departments using CARES Act funds from Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I put this on the agenda after our discussion we had during our CARES Act, where the need for tests for our corrections and health center will be ongoing, and this is an option for us to get started in doing that. And so I said I would bring it back with a contract, and that's what's on the agenda for today, or proposal, which is on the agenda for today, and I would make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and a second. And how much is the contract for?
100,000.
100,000, okay. Questions or comments to the motion before us? If not, I would call for the vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. The last item on our CARES Act update is a question about arts groups and COVID funding from Commissioner Boyle.
Right. The, I received a couple of phone calls during the allocation and the decision made about having these arts groups make contact with the Omaha Community Foundation. We needed to include some others that were not included. One was the Union on North 24th, and another one is Blue Barn, and I think there's close to 40 different organizations. And I do, I did receive the list, and I will have to find it and get it to people. But in any event, there are some others that we need to consider, and I believe there's a, should be some, there is, I'm sure there is, some funds left over in the money that we allocated. And so we'll, I don't know who coordinated that with the county, with us. Was it Karen or somebody else? Who was it?
Donna.
Oh, Donna. Okay, that's right. Yeah, I see you're there. We'll get those names to you, Donna, and we'll kind of go from there. And if you have any questions, you can, of course, call me, but of course, contact maybe someone else that actually knows more about this, but I'm the one that got the phone calls. So anyway, we'll get it put together so you see who's applying and what kind of money they're talking about. So we'll let, we'll get that going as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I just wanted to follow up on that. I think this was the discussion we had exclusively last time we were in. So what I would say, and those people that have called me, I have referred them to call the Community Foundation. It's the community, I referred them to call them because that's the heart of the discussion we had two weeks ago. And the exact discussion was the debate we had over other organizations. And so I think they're well-covered there. I think all of them, and I remember specifically mentioning the Union and some other smaller ones. So I think the director that they had in some degree is to use the money that they had, and if they needed more to come back, because we did not want to short those organizations. So I think they're covered in that. My point would be they need to contact the Union, I mean, Donna and the Community Foundation to make sure that they're addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I was just, I'll piggyback on what Commissioner Rogers was saying because they're, the organizations that we had listed, there were still dollars left over, and those were supposed to be used for, quote, "that other," which we talked about, the smaller nonprofits that were not included in that list. What I think would be helpful for Donna, though, is who's ever getting calls is to send that list to her so she knows that you've received calls from these organizations, and then they can take care of them.
Okay, I will do that.
Good idea. Thank you. Okay.
Oh, I have one, Mr.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And thanks for bringing this up, Mike. I think, you know, it's important follow-up on our discussion that of the 10 million, the bulk of which, you know, goes to the larger arts and entertainment entities. A subset of that, I think it was $2 million, is for our smaller arts entities. And I, like you, have had outreach from these folks throughout our community, and they do great, great work, particularly in this time of keeping everybody's spirits up and generating income for our economy. So having this discussion where we talk about, you know, the smaller arts groups qualifying for this, I think is all part of getting the word out, because many of the people that I talk to in the arts community were unaware of, you know, how you do it. And we had an outline from the Omaha Community Foundation regarding kind of a timeline for getting these grants up and out and considered and approved, and then the funding out as well. So anybody in the community who has an interest in the arts or involved with the arts organization, large or small, please reach out to us, and we'd be happy to discuss this with you. So thanks for bringing this up.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, item C. Wasn't sure how to word this. I put it on as discussion on the importance of wearing masks from Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. As you can see from the backup documents that we have before us on a number of different items today, this board declared an emergency on March 17th, a date that's near and dear to any Irishman's heart, because of the pandemic for purposes of helping us deal with that. Here we are, months and months later, and we have, just in Douglas County, experienced almost 13,000 cases and 150 deaths directly resulted to the pandemic. We have, in the very recent past, experienced an uptick in the last seven days of 541 new cases and seven new deaths, a death by day. This is followed by the actions of the Lancaster-Lincoln Health Board, which instituted a mask requirement on July 20th. And even if you factor in the population differences, they have seen a dramatic flattening of the curve relative to Douglas County of cases and deaths due to COVID. Clearly, masks work. And the city of Omaha followed up their example on August 11th and passed a mask ordinance here, to their credit. And we don't have one mask requirement in the balance of Douglas County, and we need one. There was a non-binding resolution passed by the Douglas County Board of Health on July 27th. Great sentiments. It has no legal force in effect. And so what I am proposing is that we take a hard look at how we actually bring mask requirements to the balance of Douglas County. There are statutory differences between our setup and Lincoln-Lancaster County setup, and I've had discussions with our county attorney relative to those. It may be something that we would address in the next session of legislature, because I think clearly, based on what we know now about these health department mask requirements, Lincoln-Lancaster County has a superior setup than we do, and it's saving lives. And so what I would ask is that we explore a mask requirement for the balance of Douglas County outside of the city of Omaha to help stem the tide, because we are racking up numbers that are simply unacceptable and unnecessary based on what we know works in Lancaster County. So let's take a hard look at this. I think we'll be coming back to this. I spent some time Saturday with the Omaha Firefighters Union handing out free masks, and I know in the community, there's a robust mask outreach, but there's no mask requirement for a big part of Douglas County. And consequently, there's no requirement that people do it. People don't do it. We need to make that requirement universal in Douglas County, because, you know what? The COVID-19 virus doesn't respect city limits. It will actually go where it wants to go. And so having a mask requirement for the city of Omaha and not the balance of Douglas County is truly ineffective. So this will be back before us again. I just wanted to give everybody kind of an update that we are falling behind, and certainly, if you look at what Lancaster County did, it's achievable. We can do something, and we need to do it as quickly as possible to save lives. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm glad you're talking about going to the legislature, because we all know we have absolutely no legal authority to do a pandemic. Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Teresa, can you come up? This will be on record. So Teresa, I wanted to just recap, because I wanted to just make sure people know the efforts that we went to with this. So probably about a month ago, you, Josh, the other attorney in the county attorney's office, and then Bosch from the city, myself and Dr. Paul were in some intense conversations regarding the authority that Lancaster had. And actually, we had a meeting with their legal attorney and the health director in Lancaster County, am I right?
Teresa York County Attorney's Office? That is correct. The statute that applies to Lancaster is worded a little bit differently than the one that applies to Douglas County.
And so there's four ways a health department can be established. One is you can have a city-county health department. You can have a total county health department. You can have a regional health department, which most, which everybody except Douglas and Lancaster-Lincoln is under because of the Health Care Cash Fund. And you can have the city-county function that Lancaster operates on. Those are the four that I know of. Is that fair? Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fair. There's, there are various different types of county health departments, and they do have a different, they have a different type than we do, and so we have two different statutes that are in play.
And I think in the conversation that we had, it was clear and pointed out, and you sent that out, that even I was wanting to challenge this a little more, but everybody felt uncomfortable with it. There, there's no way for us to get around the clause in the law that we have to have approval from HHS to do this. Is that right?
What I would say is that those two statutes, that the difference between the two is that particular clause, and that clause says that the measures applying to Douglas County and our health department, those measures are subject to approval by the State Department of Health and Human Services, and that clause is not in the statute that relates to the Lancaster Health Department.
So I just wanted to state that, that, you know, I just wanted to point out to the citizens that we've had this discussion roughly, thoroughly, back and forth. And if there was a way to have it, I think we would have had a mask mandate in June. But unfortunately, there's no way to get around it. So I think to the point that Commissioner Duda made last week about asking legislature to do it, and the conversations we've been having every week that Commissioner Borgeson's been facilitating, I think it is on record next year to try to get at that, that point of view. So I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, counsel. Thank you. So you and I have had this discussion, and we've gone over the statute 711631, and under the Board of Health Powers, there's a specific subset, nine, that deals with metropolitan class counties, Douglas County the only one. And it says, "In counties having populations more than 400,000 inhabitants as determined by the most recent census, they can enact rules and regulations for the protection of public health and prevention of communicable diseases within the district, except that such rules and regulations shall have no application within the jurisdiction limits of any city, in this case, the city of Omaha, of the metropolitan class, and shall not be in effect until 30 days after the completion of a three-week publication on legal newspaper, approved by the county attorney with his or her written approval, and filed in the office of the county clerk. A county shall comply with this subsection within six months after the determination that the population has reached more than 400,000 inhabitants as determined." So using that mechanism, the Douglas County Health Board could enact a mass regulation if they complied with that subsection in Douglas County. Correct?
That's an argument. The counter to that, Commissioner, would be that nine has been used more along the lines of communicable diseases, like we regulate pools. We don't want people to get any communicable disease from a swimming pool, and so the health department passes regulations related to swimming pools. And so nine has been used typically more for non-pandemic or non-spreading infectious disease. And I think there's some, they do use the word communicable disease. You're absolutely correct. It's in nine, but the language in nine and 10, although very subtle, there's a few differences, and I think those are, the argument lends itself, that 10 is more applicable to a disease that is spreading like a COVID. And I would just direct your attention, if I may, under 10, it talks about, you know, investigation of existence in contagious disease, and then it talks about passing measures to a to arrest the progress of the same. That implies it's spreading, that it's moving through the community, and, and we don't see that same language in nine, although it does, it does talk about communicable disease.
Right. And nine is more specific to Douglas County than 10. 10 would apply to virtually any county in the state. Nine could only apply to Douglas County. It's a more specific subset.
It is in, again, but I believe that it's speaking more to regulations that we take on a more routine type of basis, not necessarily arresting the progress of a, of a disease that's spreading through the community. It's more like a, we've, it's been used more like for the pools and things of that nature.
Right. And I, you know, I understand that you're interpreting prevention of a communicable diseases and existence of a contagious and infected disease. I don't think there's case law particularly on this exact point.
I, I, I would say generally in Nebraska, as you know, Commissioner, we give words that are plain and ordinary meaning. And so when I'm looking at the two statutes, I have to look at the differences between the two and understand why the legislature made two different sections. They must have made two different sections because they mean two different things. And so although subtle, there are some differences that, that lend themselves to the argument that 10 is more applicable to a spreading infectious disease and nine is more applicable to a regular, a regular type of regulation, if I will, or typical regulation. And I would draw your attention to the last sentence in, in nine. It talks about the county shall comply with this subsection within six months after determination that the population has reached more than 400,000. So that's not an emergency. That's not a spreading kind of communicable disease. That's like, hey, county, when you get big enough, go ahead and start passing these regulations.
And I appreciate that. I, I, I do appreciate your respect for how the legislature might have looked at these. Having spent decades with the legislature, I'm not sure that that's exactly an accurate reflection of how they did because these were done at different times. The municipal language that they use isn't specific to this statute. It's a language that's used to differentiate Omaha-Douglas County on many, many statutory levels. And it's basically if you are a metropolitan-class city or if you're a county containing a metropolitan-class city, then you do it differently. I guess my only point is you could make an argument either way. I, I think that we've discussed this and it's possible that the COVID-19 mask requirement could be interpreted to prevent a communicable disease. Now, it could also be interpreted as the existence of a contagious and infected disease. I don't know that the legislature had this in mind when they set these two distinctions up. But this is a discussion that I think needs to go on because people are getting sick and people are dying because we don't have a mask requirement in western Douglas County. We need to fix that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Borges.
Teresa, I appreciate the job you do in putting up with all of us. And I just want you to know that publicly. I've told you that privately, that I appreciate your work. The one thing I was going to ask, and you don't have to answer now, but I'm curious, you know, certain rules that the city has applied to the three-mile limit. I'm just wondering if what they passed would apply to the three-mile limit. And if you're not prepared for that, you can let us know that later. I'm just curious.
I wasn't prepared for that question, but I believe it doesn't. I can double check on that, but I think that's for zoning, in particular specifically to zoning and not, and not related to a, the ordinance specific to a health measure. So I think I'm fairly confident the answer is no.
Okay.
But I'll reach out to you privately if that's not correct.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Larry.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'd like to comment on this. I think it was last week I talked about a civil war. If you follow the news and if you listen to all this, we indeed do have a civic war because it's very apparent that the state, county, and cities do not agree with each Use the word civic or civil. You can kind of interchange them. A lot of cases, we haven't had real civil debates here. I don't know. Debate used to mean two-way conversations, but I guess it doesn't. But a lot of time and money going to waste because of the civic disagreements over what we can or can't do under this situation. I can't do anything, but I elected people to do that for me. And when three bodies in local government, state and local government, four bodies maybe, aren't getting it done, then what recourse do we have? We've got an election coming up. I can only vote for one, my own people. I can't vote against anybody else. But Article 5 of the Constitution says that citizens can propose amendments. And maybe it's time for a citizen to do that because things are getting out of control in lots of cities. They're as close to an actual civil war as we've ever been since. And actually, the civil war began not over slavery, but over things such as disagreements between legislatures and local governments and somebody trying to take somebody else's rights and properties, just like we have going here. So we may be in that situation and it's time for all the bodies to come together and serve the people, we the people. It's not a democracy. Again, a democracy is the majority of the people in this room rules, regardless of your title. Majority here rules. Unfortunately, there's not too many normal, regular citizens. But we don't have that. We do have a republic and we swear to it every time we open a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Commissioner Borges.
The only thing I'd like to say is that since I have the opportunity to respond is that the civil war was started because of slavery. It wasn't some other, other cause. And, you know, the reason, there are, there are different points of view, which is, makes it a, a, a community healthy. And it's amazing today, we have so many seven-to-zip votes, which is wonderful, but it doesn't bother me when it's five-to-two or four-to-three or anything. It just means that people are exercising their minds. So I don't look for a, a community or a government on all levels that agrees on everything. That would be really boring. If I could control it, I would make one change. Guess what that would be?
Okay. Thank you. Item D, celebrating 100 years of Women Win the Vote from Commissioner Borges.
You go, girl. Thank you. Oh, nice.
What the clerk is passing out are a couple of things. Oh, Mary Ann Borges, Douglas County Commissioner. The little woman on the stick and the little coloring character was provided by the National Foundation of Women Legislators. And they join with the Women Suffrage Centennial Commission in a project to educate and inspire all Americans in the centennial year of women's right to vote. And so you can take those to your daughters or your granddaughters, great-granddaughters, whatever. And then the second thing I passed out was while I go through this, there is a slide with that timeline and I just passed it out so you could see it a little better because it's pretty small on the slide. But again, this month is, we are celebrating an enormous milestone, 100 years of courage and hope. On August 18th, 1920, Tennessee became the 36th and final state needed to ratify the 19th Amendment affirming the right to vote shall not be denied on the basis of sex. Okay, what did I do wrong?
Mary Ann, did it say sex? I thought that was added later.
Now, it's, yep. So on slide two, here's, the voting is America's most cherished and democratic liberties. And it has a long and storied history. While the founding fathers saw voting as a fundamental component of the democracy and perfect union they sought to create, the right to vote was denied for many throughout our country's history. Those that were denied were women, African-Americans, Native Americans, and Asian-Americans. And if you look through the timeline, it, I mean, and see how far back this actually started. I mean, you look at the 1776 and you go forward to 1920, it took that long for the 19th Amendment to pass. And again, once that passed, it still took decades, not until 1965, when the Voting Rights Act passed for all citizens to be able to have the right to vote. Enter. So here is, we kicked off the historic year and I had the honor of representing Nebraska in the Rose Bowl Parade as one of the 100 suffragettes, along with the Women Suffrage Float, Years of Hope and Years of Courage. And I wasn't really quite sure what to expect and it ended up being so much more than being in just a huge, massive parade. It was actually very emotional and at the same time energizing and invigorating, which actually helped walk the five miles that we had to walk. But the cheers and the tears along the way was pretty amazing and again, pretty emotional. I have a little clip I'll play of the parade, but you'll see, once the float goes through, there are 100 women all dressed in white. And as we rounded the main corner of the event, we all grabbed hands and walked the corner together. And let me tell you, that was definitely one of the emotional pieces of, the parts of the parade. And so we'll play. This is real short, but you'll get the...
This next float is a highly anticipated one. I am not surprised to hear they took home the theme trophy for most outstanding presentation of the Rose Parade theme. Congratulations. This commemorates the 100th year celebration of the 19th Amendment giving women the right to vote. They call it Years of Hope, Years of Courage. All of those people you see riding along the float are descendants of the heroes who fought for women's rights and for civil rights. Their message is really upon their shoulders, we won the vote, and upon our shoulders, we will protect it. Great reminder for all of us as we look at the responsibility and the power to vote.
Oh, isn't that cool?
Right. Uh-oh. So in this slide, this costume, I have to give kudos to Ipsen Costume here in the community because I went to them and said, here's what the deal is. I've been asked to represent Nebraska and can you help me with the costume? And I actually got more compliments on this costume, particularly the hat, because they actually thought, they asked me, many asked, is that actually a hat from that time? Because it was, it was so real. But anyway, I thanked them and they did just a spectacular job. And again, it was really something that I'll cherish to be able to be a part of. And then slide six, so here's another event that we're taking place to celebrate this. And this actually is here in the Civic Center. This is a pop-up exhibit called Rightfully Hers. And the pop-up was actually created through the National Archives and it commemorates the 100th year anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment. But each of these panels has a story of that flight that they took to get to where we are. So Panel 1 is actually before the 19th Amendment. So it's when the nation's founders drafted the Constitution. And again, they made no mention of women in the document at all. And so it talks about and it shows different pictures and tidbits of information from that time. Panel 2 will represent how did women win the vote? And again, there's different pictures and different tidbits of information about how the fought, the fight for 70 years using different strategies. And again, over these times, we finally won in the year of 1920, the 19th Amendment was ratified. Panel 3 is the constitutional victory. The right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex. That's the 19th Amendment, August 18th, 1920. That again, panel, you can look at it and there's many pictures and little blurbs of information. And then Panel 4, what voting rights struggles persist. So even after the 19th Amendment was ratified, as I said, millions remained unable to vote. And 100 years since the ratification of the 19th Amendment, we have still seen voting rights expanded to millions more women after struggles against voter discrimination succeeded. And even today, people continue to fight to expand and protect their right to vote. And again, that is Panel 4. That display will be up on our Farnham level until the end of September. So if you go down, be sure to take a peek at it. And then Wednesday, on the actual day, we're going to do a Facebook Live stream event. And one of the presenters, Bonnie Wallace, was actually one of the walkers with me in the Rose Bowl Parade. And before COVID, she was actually going around to her service groups within her area of California and doing this presentation to talk about the celebration of this 100 years. So she reached out to me and said, you know, what can we do because of COVID? How can we get our message out? And we came up with doing a, again, Facebook Live stream of her presentation. So she does 100 years in about an hour, actually in 20 minutes, her presentation. Because we're also going to have Lynda Duckworth, who is the co-president of the League of Women Voters of Nebraska. She will be joining us as well to talk about what they're doing. So again, it's Wednesday, August 26th at 1:00 and we're going to livestream it. And I do have to thank Leah Baez from, from our office because she has been amazing and helping and assisting with putting all of this together, not just this presentation, but the actual Facebook Live presentation. And so I want to thank her. And of course, I want to thank Karen because she's my right-hand lady here getting me through the presentation. But again, I just wanted to take some time to talk about the importance of this, to make sure the community knew that we're activities going on and to invite everyone to tune in on Wednesday, August 26th, to Facebook Live at 1:00 for our streaming event.
Is that tomorrow?
That's tomorrow, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Borges. Appreciate that. Commissioner Borges.
Oh, Mary Ann, thanks a lot for doing that. That's really, really important. And there was a, there's a history of my dad's parents. The name was his mother, John and Ellen Carey. And they homesteaded south of Fremont in Saunders County. And there's an excerpt, I don't know, it was really great. One of the cousins, a long past, put together a booklet on the Carey family. And one of the things they did was they had a report of William Jennings Bryan speaking at the Carey Homestead, which had a, there were no trees on the prairie and they had a beautiful shelter built that they put in. It was really remarkable. So they held a lot of events there because it was really a picnic ground. Plus, they built a public school right across the road. It's called the Carey School to this day. Anyway, William Jennings Bryan spoke and my great-grandfather, John Carey, asked my great-grandmother, Ellen Carey, what she thought of it. Well, William Jennings Bryan had called for women to have the right to vote and this was before it was... was before it was obviously happened. And so she made the remark, well, this is the first time, I love this comment, this is the first time I heard a politician make sense when he spoke. So anyway, that was, that was her comment a long time ago. She couldn't vote.
One, one other thing that you can look up, which is a very cool project. I tried to see if she was going to be available for our livestream event, but she's not. But there's a project called Her Flag, and the woman went to every state and put together a flag representing all of the states up until the ratification. The last one, as I said, was Tennessee, so she recently was in Tennessee, and they... That was cute, because they all did the social distancing and all of that, to be able to sew on the strip, it's Tennessee, to finish her flag. And they will have a big presentation in DC for that. So I was, again, looking up on the internet, but it's called Her Flag, and it's a pretty cool piece of artwork that she's created.
And I've heard women, instead of saying they got the vote, they said they took the vote.
That's right. That's right.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Borges.
Thanks a lot.
Yep.
Next is a presentation by Daniel Padilla and Roger Garcia regarding Lending Link, coming from Commissioner Borges.
Yes. Let me mention that Daniel Padilla is a very interesting man, and he's going to explain where he came from and what he does, and his previous, I should say, where he came from, what his previous employment was, and what he's doing now. Daniel, I'm sorry you waited so long, but I appreciate this very much. I do have to say that I tried to reach Roger, he's out of town, and I'll fill in after he's through the presentation, a very important presentation, so please start, and tell us your name and your address and what you do.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Padilla, live at 311 South 51st. My place of business is at 4706 South 24th. I'm the executive director of Lending Link. Our corporate name in Nebraska is the Economic Empowerment Center. Our trade name is Lending Link. We incorporated in January 2019. After a couple of attempts, we were able to obtain our 501(c)(3) designation from the IRS to conduct business in the way we wanted to do. Basically, we're the nonprofit response to payday lenders. We are trying to do, or not trying, we're doing loans between $200 and $2,500 on a secure basis, not requiring payment after two weeks. We are able to extend the, the payment up to six months on an installment basis. The interest rate that we charge is only 5% instead of the 387% or 487% that the payday lenders charge. We also offer car loans, trying to buy the, or go against the buy here, pay here dealers that are really putting a dent into our community members' pockets, getting them into this cycle of debt. And we also offer some micro-business loans, only up to $5,000 for, for very small businesses. How can we do this? I mean, we, we are a nonprofit, so we get grants. Those grants cover our, our overhead, our operations, and we also get grants to, to do the lending. Basically, that's free money that we get, so we don't have to pay interest in that money, and we're able to lend at such a, such a low interest rate. Right now, we, we started to lend back in June of 2019, after we got the designation. We've done about 2,000 notes, and we have about $2.1 million lent. Our delinquency rate is about 7%. It went up a little bit when COVID started, and that's when we got help from other foundations, because COVID wasn't in our budget for this year. So we had to get some emergency funding from other foundations that helped us through the crisis. Our lending is just like a payday lender. We, we base our decisions more on the, on the character lending piece. We have limit on, on the writing guidelines, but most of our, our clients are approved. We only have one office right now, located at 24th and L. Obviously, we had plans to expand this year and put an office somewhere in North Omaha, one in, one in each quadrant of the city, so our plans are to cover the four quadrants. We also offer financial education, financial coaching. We've discovered that when we offer financial education in a setup like this, it's, it's very hard to get to the individuals. So we made contact with them, and then offer our coaching services on an individual basis at their places of employment, the library, at our offices, wherever they feel more comfortable. We don't have any service limitations, only that had to be a resident of, of Nebraska. Most of our clients are from Douglas County, some from Sarpy. No income limitations whatsoever, no... It doesn't matter where they live. So our only limitation right now is that we only have one office. Sometimes we offer satellite services. We bring our staff to different places or, or different community organizations, trying to do what we do in, in those areas. The only thing that we require is an in-person meeting. We don't, we still have to talk to the persons to, to base our decisions on, on their character. So this is what we're trying to do right now. I mean, it's going really well. We're obviously starting to look for funding for next year. But in the meantime, something else happened. Those are basically, those aren't grants, those are loans. We require repayment. Some of the clients started to say, okay, this is COVID, I, I'm not working, I was laid off, I don't have, I don't have an income, so what can we do? Do we do grants? So we joined a coalition of seven other organizations within the state of Nebraska, so this was a statewide effort. And we were able to, to raise $8.5 million to distribute among residents who didn't qualify for the stimulus packet, or who didn't qualify for unemployment, or any other type of federal or state aid. As of right now, we, Lending Link, so we were the, the pass-through money, the, the grants were given to us, and we distribute those, those awards to the residents that applied or were contacted by, by the other partner organizations. We've issued about 7,500 payments and distributed about $7.1 million. The average payout is $878. About 45% of those awards have been given in the, in Douglas County. We still have $2.3 million, $2.3 million to award. We are expecting to reach about 2,500 other residents to do that. So this is separate, I mean, those are grants we don't require. The only question is, do you or anybody in your family receive the, the stimulus packet? Do you qualify for unemployment or any other type of financial aid from the state or any government? Or have you gotten any help from the Angel Fund? The Angel Fund is us. So if you, if the answer is yes to any of those, you don't qualify. If it's no, then you go to the intake process that pretty much will award you between either 500, 750, or $1,000. Separates, there's grants, but the main purpose of, of us is to be the payday lenders. We were, obviously, were, were hoping that the, the initiative will defeat the interest rates at 400% in November. And even though 36% is still high, it is, it is much better than the 407% that was the average last year charged by the payday lenders in the state of Nebraska. So thank you, Commissioner.
Isn't this remarkable?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Daniel, welcome.
Thank you.
I haven't seen you in a little bit, but it's good to see you, old friend.
Thank you, Commissioner.
This is a great program, and thanks for bringing it to us. Appreciate it. You do good work.
Thank you very much. I will leave my contact information with the clerks if you have any, any other information you need, or if I need to talk to somebody else to, to help more people, please let me know. Thanks again.
Thanks.
Commissioner Borges.
Daniel, we definitely will, and, and this is so remarkable. You know, I've always, I've always thought the way to stop this unconscionable interest rate being charged to people who do not have a banking connection and so forth, they're so vulnerable, and sets them up for failure. The way to do it is to compete, and that is really what you're doing, in a very polite way. You're offering money at a reasonable rate and helping so many people. It is just, for me, it's absolutely a dream come true when Roger introduced me to you, and I had some other friends, Ben Salazar and some others in the community, Benny Palermo and others, that are aware of what you do. And you came from the First National Bank, over 20-year career, and so you, I mean, you really know what you're doing. Plus, I've called to, to speak to you, there's a prompt phone answer right away, and I can tell that the people answering are bilingual, very friendly people. This is just a dream come true. So his organization can help where the gaps are with, with us on people who need to have their rent paid and stay, and stable, and make a car payment, whatever it is, it's just amazing. So I guess what I'd ask you to do is, if you have any other information that's in printed form, it'd be interesting to see it, just so we are able to undergrasp it. I mean, the angel part of it is amazing as well, but the loans are just a godsend. And what I'd like to ask you to do is give a phone number where you can, your office can be reached, and if someone needs help, what's the number they call?
Definitely. I'll leave my, my contact information with the clerks.
All right. And I do need to take a moment. Roger Garcia made this connection, and Roger and I were opponents, and someone asked me, well, what, what are you doing? And I said, well, that race was so close, it was three votes. So I really consider him kind of a co-commissioner. I mean, he's in the community, and, and it came so close, but for four votes, he'd be sitting here. So I recognize that, and to honor him and honor the voters in that community, it came so close, I think I need to have him involved. So we're in frequent contact, and I called him up a few weeks ago, and I said, Roger, meet me for a cup of coffee, I, I need some help. And so I told him what I was trying to do. We have some people that are really in trouble. And so he, a few days later, he calls me, and we had a great lunch at 20th and Martha, somewhere in that area, and a great restaurant. And anyway, Roger put this together, and I want to give him the credit for it, and I, but he couldn't be here today. So in any event, I'm incredibly pleased with what you do. It's amazing. And I mean, it's a real calling, to say the least.
Thank you.
You know, I'm so, so proud to know you. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, I think we'd all like to have a loan application. No, I'm just kidding.
Thank you.
Daniel, thanks, and we'll be in touch. I, I need to come over and say hello to you here.
Thank you, Daniel. Thank you for the presentation and for what you do. We will move next to the public hearing on the 2020-2021 budget for Douglas County. This is the budget hearing, and after the hearing is over, if we so choose, the board could take action today. I will turn things over to Joe Lorenz.
Can we jump right into it, or do you want to talk first?
Set it up, yeah. Oh, good, thanks.
Good morning, Joe.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're going to run through the budget that we're asking to be adopted today. As you know, we're doing this a little later than we usually do, because we decided to wait to see how property tax proceeds came in, to make sure that, you know, we wouldn't have to change the budget, impact it, you know, have some cutbacks. But property tax proceeds came in at, you know, 99% of what we were expected, and they continue to dribble in. So actually, the revenue part that we were expecting came in as expected. So with that, we are going to go forward with the budget that we actually set out and was submitted, for the most part, by, by May 1. So with that, we handed out a short, six-page document that I'll take you through, which summarizes the budget. The first page would be the, the county tax levy, a 10-year history, and this would be the second year in a row... Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. Oh, there it is. That one, thank you. So this shows the 10-year history. This is the second year, will be at 29.559 cents. Last year, we increased the levy by a penny and a half to create the funding for the Juvenile Justice Center across the street. And so we're continuing this year at that rate. The second chart shows, you know, what a typical taxpayer in Omaha, when they receive their tax statement, you know, a lot of them really don't look and see what's county, what's city, what's, what's education, and, but this is an, an example of what it is. And you can see that the county's levy for a citizen of Omaha accounts for only 13.2% of the total tax levy, with by far the lion's share going to the schools. As you can see in this example, Omaha Public Schools is about 56%. So, you know, when people talk about taxes and whatever, the, the county portion really is a relatively small portion of the property tax that they pay. So on to the budget that we're proposing. This proposed budget contains no increase in the tax levy on assessed property values. We're, so we're staying at that 29.55. The budget, when we put it together, assumed a 6% increase in total county assessed property values. We actually, Friday, received from the assessor the certified value. It was up 7.395%, almost 7.4%. So property tax values, that's the second year in a row that it's been over 7%. So property tax values in Omaha continue to appreciate, and surprisingly enough, in talking to people out there, even during now, during the pandemic, in general, the property market remains strong, and there are people are being able to sell their homes at, at asking in a relatively quick timeframe. So that's a good thing for the county and for us as a funding mechanism, is that property tax values remain strong and increasing. So what the budget has, and how I really have brought this budget to you, this was a budget that really, we would look at, at July 1, at the first of our fiscal year, in that I put all the impact of the CARES Act funding that we received from the federal government, we kept that in, in an account, in county administration. As you know, we received $166.1 million from the federal government under the CARES Act, and slowly, over the past few weeks, we've been distributing it. But the budget we're going to approve today doesn't really have that sent out into the different operating groups. What we'll do, I thought it would be best and more meaningful, is just to keep it consolidated, and then when we do comparisons of departments and things like that, it's really comparing apples to apples. And what we'll do afterwards is do, the overall budget won't increase, but we'll make transfers to the different funds and departments based on their CARES Act allocation. So I thought this would be the most meaningful way to present it. But as such, the budget excluding the $166 million in CARES Act funding came in at $430.7 million, which is 0.2% above last year, as increased general fund operating expenses are offset by lower costs for road projects. As you remember, a year ago, there had been some flooding, so there was an increase in spending for road and bridges. There's also lower allocations in this budget for tourism spending, because hotel and motel taxes are down, and all the things that generate tourism money have been severely impacted by the pandemic. So the amount of money coming in that we would use to fund these tourism activities is also down. And finally, it reflects a reduction in expected employee medical expenses. Another result of the pandemic is that, at the end of last fiscal year, we had a $6 million favorable variance in employee medical, medical expense, because for the last quarter of the year, nobody really went to the doctor except for an emergency. And looking at the numbers for the first few months this year, it's continuing, it's not as bad, it's not completely shut down like it was in March and April, but it's still lower than it had been. So we also reflected that in a reduction in expected employee medical expenses. The other last thing about the pandemic that I'll tell you that we can see in our numbers is that Keno revenues are higher than they've been, because a lot of people have been staying home or going somewhere to play Keno during the pandemic, so for what... going somewhere to play Keno during the pandemic. So, for what it's worth. The general fund budget, again, excluding the CARES Act money, which is sitting in county and administration, is $225.8 million, which is a 2.7% increase above last year. And that's due to increases for the election commission. Excuse me, there's a general election and presidential election this year, which always means additional significant expenses for them. Plus, they're having additional expenses because of the CARES Act and having to do much more by mail. So that's a significant expense. The Juvenile Assessment Center is up, as we've shifted. Some money that used to be grant-funded is now being funded through general fund revenues. The sheriff is up a bit, although they have, for the most part, a revenue offset, as they're creating a few new positions under, for schools. And, but like I say, for the most part, their revenues are, have grant offsets. The Public Building Commission is up year-over-year 6% due to the security increases in the way that they've had to reconfigure the entry and exit and staff those in the building for security purposes. And also, grant administration is up more than it would be, because the community-based aid grant didn't spend all their money at the end of last year. Again, the pandemic caused a lot of these community foundations to not be able to do their grant work the last quarter of the year. So what the state did is they said, all right, we'll just roll over that grant money into the next year on top of what was going to be there already. So that caused the amount of the grant to go up. So a lot of these expenses are in some way driven by, by the pandemic. So the, you know, we just got the final valuation on Friday, so the, we're going to come back in a couple of weeks with the final levy and tax rate, but it is projected to be a consistent levy. So there'll be no, no tax increase there. Next chart is just sources of revenue for the county, and you can see that that remains driven by property tax proceeds, that a property tax proceeds account for 45% of our total revenues. Motor vehicle sales are a significant part, and that's another thing that I've heard, is that sales of motor vehicles, particularly used automobiles, are continuing to be strong. If you talk to anyone in the treasurer's office, they have significant lines at a lot of their operations right now, as people are getting relicensed and things like that. So that source of revenue continues to remain strong. And then, the other major contributor, of course, is general fund department revenue for the different fees that the rural offices charge. So there's not a lot of change here, and it just shows how that property tax really is our primary source of funding for county government. Another thing I want to run you through very quickly, these are the transfers that go through. And what this highlights is inheritance tax, how important inheritance tax is to fund in county operations, that we've increased it $1 million to $14 million. We're going to transfer from the inheritance tax fund to different parts of the county, including the Health Department, Community Services, the, the Health Center. So whenever they talk about eliminating the inheritance tax, that would be extremely detrimental to the county, as it does serve to fund a lot of our operations. And it really helps us out and keeps the levy at its current level.
Joe, do you want to mention who that tax comes from?
Yeah, it's a, it's a formula that it, it, and it's a wealth-based formula. So it's, it mostly is a tax on wealthy estates. And it goes up, if it's to your, like, direct spouse, there's no tax on it. But as you go out to certain relatives, it gets higher. And then if you leave money to people who you aren't related to, it goes up more. And it's really a tax that hits under 1%. It's like, less than half a percent of the total population is affected by this tax, and it's mostly large estates. And one of the reasons it's been, you know, significant in Douglas County is thanks to Berkshire Hathaway, is that a lot of the original investors in Berkshire Hathaway, over time, became very wealthy, and they tend to have large estates and leave that money to, you know, a fairly significant larger amount of people than most estates. And so that's been a source of revenue, kind of a step-down effect of Berkshire for Douglas County.
But you mentioned spouse, and I also think children are included, that they're not taxed.
Right. Right. Direct family isn't. So but the cousins and aunts and uncles.
Right.
That's where the tax kicks in.
I thought it's important to mention that.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
And like I say, it impacts a very small percentage of all estates settled in Douglas County.
In a year.
By and large, I'd like for Joe to run through this, but I should have Boil got a comment at this point, too.
Oh, I was only going to add that on the estate tax, that I've, I've done those before. And one of the most unusual ones, or I guess it was pretty usual, I had a call from a woman who wanted me to handle her great aunt's estate. And she was a schoolteacher, her husband invested. Anyway, she ended up with just close to $3.5 million to dole out. And she had no children. And so what happened is, I contacted, there were about 30, 35 people who took, who got money from her. And most of the calls, it was really interesting, there are Arizona and California and different places. And I'll just give you one snapshot. I would get a call, but there were several like this. They would ask a question about, you know, different things, and when would the money be coming, and all these other different kinds of questions. It's always the last question they ask. And they would say, can I ask you, who was this woman? I mean, they had no idea, you know. And so I would ask, what was your mother's maiden name? What was your dad's? Who, the relationship? And they'd finally figured out, they're about a, you know, five or six nieces away from whatever. And so it was a windfall to them. And they would get the minimum, I think, the minimum amount was around $50,000. And there would be an 18% tax on that. And so that was kind of the ultimate. But it was a windfall. So I mean, it's, these people are, they don't even know who this is.
Yeah.
And they're getting a check for $38,000. So.
And that's true, that a lot of people who get this don't live in Nebraska.
That's right.
The estates are settled in Nebraska, but these people live all across the country.
Yeah, it is really important to hang on to this. It looks like they think, you know, estate tax, they're getting this. Well, they get you on social security, they get you on your pension and all that kind of stuff, too. It's in the same category. But this one is one where it's really a windfall, most times. And there aren't taxes, like you said, on close relatives.
Yep. Thank you.
Now, Joe, if you would, continue working your way through the budget, please.
And I just got one more chart that I'll take you through. If I get it. There it is. And it's this chart. How, how do I get rid of this current, how do I get rid of There it is. We'll just, if you could just go to the bottom line, that's where you see this year's valuation, you know, $50 billion, $50.9 billion in Douglas County. That's the certified number from the assessor. It was up $3.5 billion, or close to 7.4%. So you can see, particularly the last three years, we've been over 5%. And as opposed to, you know, about 10 years ago, coming out of the Great Recession, when we were, you know, a lot of times, one, under 1% or certainly under 2%. And that's when we really used to have the, what we used to call the structural deficits in the budget, and that the, just the payroll costs and everything else, our budget really increases at at least a 3% rate. But now, when we're having property valuations increase in this 5% to 7% range, it gives us the ability to cover those increases in payrolls and things like that, and not have to increase the tax levy. So that's just my quick summary of the budget. It was, it was basically a, a budget without any dramatic increases or program changes, and somewhat impacted by the budget. And of course, the, the biggest impact in the absolute financials is the impact of the $166 million of CARES Act money that we received and we are distributing to the different entities. So with that, I'd open it. Any questions?
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to respond to any info? Just your Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Joe, this document is the entire budget?
No, that's the summary. I, I think there should be in the packet that Sharon distributed. There's a 20, or a 15-page detailed summary by department and line item. That should be in your book.
Okay. Because I got one from the city, just did their budget. It's about the size of a phone book. And I was wondering.
No, and we do a very, you know, thick filing with, with our state filing, that by fund and by detail. So that backup would be available.
Yeah, I got that because the city council gets them individually.
Yeah.
And we're sitting up here, we don't have a meeting. We don't do that.
We don't make them that thick, no.
Yeah. What about budget hearings? Do we have any budget hearings this year?
We did not have, well, there were, we, I talked to the co-chairs of the committee, the two commissioners, and we decided not to have any, because in essence, there weren't any budgets that were totally out of asking for dramatic increases or having, and those that did have increases, like the election commission, were pretty understandable. So, but in working with the rest of the departments, I basically passed the message that, you know, look what's going on with the pandemic, this is in the year, to be asking for significant increases or new programs. So everybody kind of held back this year. So I don't know if any, if any of the co-chairs would like to talk about that, about their feelings on hearings.
Well, we did talk about.
I'm just answering, asking questions. I appreciate your answer. Thank you. Just for information, because people might be watching this.
Sure.
It's their only opportunity to hear much about this half-billion-dollar budget. The, for, for the folks watching, the difference that you outlined here between the $430 million budget, the $225 million general fund budget, and the $596 million overall, all-in budget. Could you just give the folks watching this an idea of what those three numbers are all about? Because I think they could be a little confused.
Yes.
What the budget is.
Let me talk, year-over-year, the general fund budget went up 2.7%. And like I said, that was driven by those four or five different areas. The total county budget only went up 0.2%, and that was because that we had, you know, the roads, the healthcare, and tourism were down. So year-over-year, the total county budget is almost flat. And then.
So just, so folks can follow along, so that 430.7 includes the 225.7.
Yes, the general fund is part of the overall. Yes.
There you go.
Yes. And then, what I always kept kind of separate is the $166 million of CARES Act money, because that is money, that's not based on any tax revenue in Douglas County. That was a lump-sum payment made to us by the federal government. And so, as we all know, we've been spending a lot of time dealing with that $166 million.
Right.
And so that's put on top of it. If you look at our total budget, it's reflected in it. But that's not, it's kind of a one-off event.
That's how we get to the 596.
Yes, that's how we get, exactly.
So, which, you know, if, if you just looked at it, would be a record-high budget for.
Yes.
Douglas County.
Yes, absolutely.
And this budget, our budget, the 430 budget, is, is predicated on, we had significant assessed value increases of real property.
Over 7%, yes.
Okay. In addition, we have, last year and this year, an increased mill levy from 28.059 to 29.559.
That's a penny and a half. That's in a separate fund, restricted fund for the Juvenile Justice Center.
Right. Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions or comments regarding the budget during this public hearing?
I have a comment, if we get to that point. Would you want to go, Mike?
I was just going to thank Joe for working so closely with PJ and me. I enjoyed it. It was really very useful. Thanks a lot, Joe. We're very fortunate to have you at the helm.
Oh, it's, it's fun to work with you guys.
All right.
All right.
Strange, isn't it? Fun on budgets.
Yeah.
I have fun.
All right. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. So we have gone to pretty much of an invisible budget process that I haven't witnessed in any other branch of government, and I've been watching all my life. So we have no budget hearings publicly. The public is not allowed to participate in the construction of this budget. We have year-over-year property tax increases on top of year-over-year property assessed value increases. So you're getting a double whammy there. And, you know, I think that this is moving severely in the wrong direction for the average taxpayer in Douglas County. You're not getting any view of where your money is either coming from or going to. This seven-page thing, I wish I had brought it in, versus what the City of Omaha has extensive public hearings about, and produces an extensive document, is a real tell on what you're not seeing. So you are presented with basically a $596 million, albeit a big part of it from CARES, let's vote on it right now thing. We've just had about a half-hour discussion, and this will go to vote. I can't support this. I can't support this lack of transparency and these tax increases. And I don't think that we will ever get in front of that, on top of that, to any extent to help either the efficiency of our government or the taxpayers out there, unless we have public hearings, input, and analysis of everything that goes into how we're spending the public's money. That's not happening. It always, hasn't always been that way, and it doesn't need to be that way going forward. It is that way right now, and I don't think that's right. So I can't support this budget, and I can't support this continued tax increase to pay for an unnecessary construction scheme involving a kids' jail across the street.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Any other comments regarding the budget? Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I understand your concern, Jim. I, but if you look at what the budget's all about, the, the cost is driven by personnel. And we've talked in executive session when Marcos comes in and talks about the needs for, we have, I guess, close to 17, maybe more bargaining units now. But we bargain with them, and they're, they're guided by, you know, what the community, other, other departments in the, in the United States, really, what they get. And so there's not a lot of room for, wiggle room for us when we get requests for salaries, although we do our best. We've gotten away from longevity and some things like that, that we, we get back, and that costs money. But what it, what it comes down to is that the dollars that are needed, you know, for example, I didn't, I wasn't real fond of the, not that I, it's him, but I wasn't real fond of the sheriff adding five employees or whatever it is. But, you know, that's, that's kind of where it's at. They need some for schools and that sort of thing. The Juvenile Assessment Center is, there's all sorts of things trying to be done with the juvenile centers, and that, that work. The election commissioner's got elections, and the Public Building Commission has additional costs. So I mean, and, so there, there really is, I don't know, you know, maybe what I'd really ask you to do, Jim, is take a look at the budget, and come back and tell us where you think it ought to be cut. I mean, if you want to cut the, you know, the assessor's office, or if you want to cut the county attorney, or the public defender, or, I just don't know, you know, the growth is incredible. The justice system is costing us in this, as taxpayers in this county. I asked Joe to do some work on it, and it came up to $300 million a year, which includes the Omaha police, and the jails, and the courts, and the bailiffs, and the whole thing, probation, all the things we have to pay that the state mandates. We have no choice in that. We have to provide the probation offices, we have to provide the off. We have to provide the probation offices, we have to provide the officer, the whole thing, the computers and, so I mean, we're really locked into these expenses. And as you probably know, the county attorney has to pay a filing fee every time he files a charge. So when he filed charges against Niko Jenkins, he had to pay several hundred dollars to the clerk of the district court, which goes into the judge's retirement fund. We'll try to cut that, which we did. It didn't get very far. So I mean, we're a child of the state and mom and dad tell us what to do, and we haven't got any choice. We really don't. So we're mandated to do these things. We're mandated to provide services, you know, Melissa's salary and all these other people, that comes from, from all these sources. And, you know, we could, I guess, close some of those departments, but we really can't. So anyway, that's, I'm not making excuses. I'm just telling you, this is what we run into. And there are expenses that we cannot really control. And there are, a lot of them are unmandated. I'd like to see us, for example, issue all license plates coming out of the state instead of individual counties. Cut all that out and maybe close a couple of branches of the treasurer's office. You know, the DMV now is out in 170th and Plough Ground, west of France. So anyway, that's, that's kind of where I am, Jim. I would love to, you know, it'd be nice to not have an increase of any kind, but that's not realistic, just isn't realistic. So tell us what you think we should cut, in fairness.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle.
And it's your prerogative to vote, no.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Morgan?
Joe, the two big items, really big items, the health center, correction facility, if I'm correct, I think it's probably over 50% of our budget.
Yeah. Although this year, the health center didn't really go up because there, again, their population went down because of the pandemic. But the thing that Commissioner Boyle was talking about is just criminal justice between the sheriff corrections, probation, the county attorney, the public defender. That continues to show an increase in caseloads, and when that happens, there's an increase in expenses.
And they've asked for more people.
Yes.
And we've approved that.
Yes.
Here publicly. One of the things that's most important of all of us is respect. And I really, truthfully, get very tired of calling the youth center the kiddie jail. And the second thing I want the taxpayers to know, that the cost of that is around $22, $25 million total, out of that $120 million approximately. Most of that money, 80% or whatever, is for the Hall of Justice, probation, correction, the county attorney, public defender, et cetera. They're leasing space, they're in five different offices, Don Klein's own office, even Flood's. And Mike and I have been down there a number of times talking about what the needs were. So, you know, I think it's important, and Mark and I have been out there with the parents at the youth center, talking about and listening to some of the needs, and that's what this is about, to improve that situation. And we have tremendous community support to do more in the mental health area with the youth. Commissioner Boyle, and you correct me, because you've been in some of those meetings and it's a priority, to do more in the mental health area with our youth and so on. So I think sometimes it really is important to state that this is about caring about our young people and hopefully making a brighter future for them. And that's what it's really about, so. And I thank you, Mike.
I agree with you, absolutely. I mean, we're serving people.
Back to the budget. Further comments, questions? Commissioner Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Joe, do you still have the PowerPoint available to you?
Yes.
I just, I just want you to put up the tax rate chart.
This one?
Nope, the very first slide.
Oh, yeah, the bar chart.
Because when statements are made that year after year after year with all these tax increases, this pretty much tells you what we've done since 11, 2011, '12, all the way to 2020, '21. And if I would ask you to go back, because I've done it, to create a bar chart all the way back to the 90s, this would not change very much at all. You would see little blips like we see here. So just so we're reading this correctly, the tax increase that took part back in 2013, '14, there was a tax increase there. And my memory isn't as great as I thought it was, because I was trying to think if that was a bond issue or not. Then it stayed the same until 2019, and it's not going up this year. It's staying the same.
And then the penny and a half last year was an increase, but it was for a specific restricted fund. It wasn't county operations. It was the funding for the, to pay for the $120 million project across the street.
Right. And, and again, I think the other important piece is, we've had, again, it's been stated that our health center and our correction, our criminal justice services that we provide, the criminal justice is, is the top, and then our health and human services is the second, with the health center being the majority of that. And again, we're serving people. We're serving people that, again, are, one, mandated for us to serve, and those that are poor and indigent within our community. And so I think this is, again, very telling of us being very aware of what we're, the budget and the taxpayer dollars, and that we have held the line for one, two, three, four, five, six years prior to that increase that we did for the project. So I just wanted to point that out, so people understand that we don't have tax rate increases over and over and over.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. Further comments during this public hearing? Larry, this would be, if you have something to say about the budget, this is your chance to say it.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Let's travel back in time a little bit, folks. How is this unlike the situation before 1776? When the king and his appointed subjects were not amenable to the citizens' wishes? Dictates here and dictates there, taxes here, taxes there. Smoke screens for this and smoke screens for that. Point is, we revolted over such taxes and the increasing loads, taking things, taking property away from people, even. So what happens when my property taxes go up 17% every year for the last couple of years? Those figures talk about 5%, 3%. That sounds awful good. But my taxes are going up 17% every damn year.
No, they're not.
And I really expect you guys to practice some forbearance and start cutting the budget instead of decreasing it. Bought my house in 1971 for $21,500. Now you've got it valued for over $235,000. For what? So that you can increase tax by 17% again on the valuation? The valuation went up 17%. The dollar amount of the property taxes went up about 17%. Can't afford it anymore. I'll probably have to move. But now I hear Iowa's more expensive. But we threw off a government for such tomfoolery. You can't deny it. Start practicing some restraint, and you might find that you get a bigger share of the pie by doing it. By cutting the budgets, you might get more revenue somehow, because more people can live here. And I don't know that anybody can prove to me that an apartment renter actually pays that much increase every year in property tax. He doesn't see it going out of his billfold like I do. Inheritance tax? Now I can't even give my house away to my kids, I guess. Explain that. You don't need taxes for that. Is that what that means? How many citizens actually understand all that? How many understand when they go down to the property tax hearings down here and challenge it, that they face a professional real estate person? How many citizens like me can debate a professional real estate person? How many like me can gather so many so-called comparable properties when we can't get into the house to measure the rooms? My figures are off on square footage. I was kind of laughed at.
Could we focus on the budget? This is a public hearing for the budget.
Taxes, thank you. Taxes, my taxes pay the budget.
Yes, yes, they do. Thank you, Larry. Commissioner Morgan?
Very quick statement. If you're giving inheritance to your children, it is not part of that tax, period. You can give part of your estate or house to your children without that inheritance tax. So I just wanted the record to be clear.
During this public hearing on the budget, would anybody else care to comment on the proposed budget before us? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. We have a motion from Commissioner Rogers, a second from Commissioner Morgan, to approve the budget as presented. Mr. Clerk, could we please vote?
I'm voting yes for the people who need services.
Commissioner Ferguson?
As we're waiting for the vote to be called, one of the things that Commissioner said. That I should have brought up during the CARES Act, but I think for the budget as well, when we talk about the increased cost that the election commission office is taking because of the elections, I would like to have a discussion with our election commissioner, again, about the need for potentially getting a few more drop boxes because of what we're seeing happening with our mail service. And so I just wanted to alert that maybe at the CARES Act meeting on Monday, we can ask him to comment on that. I know we're getting four more, so that would be 13. And I.
We need more.
Well, I'm wondering if we do, just because of what we're hearing. So I want to have that, that discussion.
Thank you. I'd like to find out how the.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no, all other commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. And, and again, I want to thank Commissioner Kraft for making the effort to be, he has slipped out again, but I know how important it was for him to be a part of these votes, and I appreciate him making the effort to be here. Commissioner Boyle, would you?
Well, I was just going to say that I did, I have spoken informally with Brian about that, and he did have those made, and there, there's a backlog to get them, but we had ordered them ahead of time, so we got them. But there's something we probably need to do. We probably need to talk to somebody like Hempel Sheik Metal down on 13th Street, and they could make them for us. So that's what I believe he's doing. So your message was received.
Thank you. Moving on, in the agenda, we will, I think we're good for the Finance Committee. And under Child and Youth Services, we have a programming update presented by Kim Avicati. Good morning, Kim.
Good afternoon.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Whatever.
Sorry, just a friendly reminder. Kim Avicati, Deputy County Administrator over Juvenile Justice Reform. There's a PowerPoint presentation coming around to you. It's up on the screen right now. Just wanted to point out, first thing on, on the first slide, there is a saying on the bottom of that slide, which has been guiding everything that we're doing within our juvenile justice reform. We all know within juvenile justice, we have a tendency in our system to deal with the behaviors that we see in the youth. And the reality is, if you're truly going to reform a system and, and help children and youth, you have to dig further than that, and you have to look at what are the needs of the youth. You have to meet those needs. So as we're going forward with many of our reform efforts that I'm going to detail for you, it's really focusing on what are the needs that we are seeing of the youth in our community, and how do we meet those needs? Next slide is just a visual that, that just so that you have, Slide 2 is, that we are using with all of our various committees and work groups. To me, it's, it's a great visual, because it talks about juvenile justice in the form of a highway. We know youth are entering that highway, but there's various parts that they can exit. And our goal is, as we create these reforms, to have all of these various exits, so that we don't end up with that bottom one where they're in placements and in out-of-home and in out-of-state. So those are just some of the various exits that, that we've been working on, is a visual that's a quick and easy way to see it. So next slide, I want to talk a little bit about our prevention and alternatives to system involvement, because we know one of the main keys, and that would be Slide number three, is to really take a look at what are we doing. So as a county, this is what we're doing. We have our community-based grant funds. As Joe stated, for the 2021 grant year, we were allowed to carry over $233,000, a little bit more than that. So our total grant funds awarded were $1.9 million to community providers. There are 17 community providers in our community that are now providing services to youth and kids. Because of the hard work of this board, I am proud to say that 90% of our grant funds are going directly to community providers working with the youth and our families. Only 10% of that $1.9 million is actually staying with the county to help cover some administrative costs of the county. The other great news we've worked really hard on is that 85% of these grant funds are for, for community-based providers that are east of 72nd Street. So we're trying to get the providers within the community to meet the needs of the youth that are in those communities. There's a whole range of services I've listed on the PowerPoint, from mediation to restorative justice, to refugee services that, that we're helping to pay for. Good news is, our next grant year will start in the spring of 2021, and the Crime Commission at the state level has now made this grant a two-year grant, so you will not have to do it every year. It is now going to a two-year grant, so we can do more systemic reform through it. The other part of our prevention plan is we will be responsible at the state level to create a new community plan that will involve all of you and all of the community to determine what are our priorities over the next four years, and where do we want to spend our money to get those priorities done. Next slide is, is about our Juvenile Assessment Center. As, as most of you know, I'm very proud of the Juvenile Assessment Center. I think I said to all of you, it is a nationally-recognized juvenile assessment center. It has been in creation almost 20 years now. But I gave you on the slide, and I won't go through all of it, we did do in 2020 an independent evaluation, four-year evaluation of the Juvenile Assessment Center. And I think there's a lot of things to be very proud of, and there's also areas that we can work on. But two of the things I just want to point out is that 76% of the family and youth that went through our juvenile assessments center felt that they were better off, that the service is worthwhile. The other thing that we looked at was recidivism rates, and for youth that went through the juvenile assessment center, they were two times lower for youth who actually complete the juvenile assessment center. So what that means in reality is, we're keeping more than two times the youth out of the, the formal juvenile justice system. I put on there just some current data, because people always ask about the youth that we are currently seeing. 60% are male. I'm very proud that when you look at, 68% of the youth we're seeing at the juvenile assessment center are, are youth of color. So we are seeing them there. The top offenses are mainly your shoplifting, assault, disorderly conduct. We're currently in the process at the juvenile assessment center of, of looking at our assessment tools, ensuring that we're using the right tools, and that we have those right tools driving the needs within the community as to the providers that we need. Couple of proposed initiatives that we are currently working on within the prevention realm is a more robust status offense diversion system. Some country, I mean, some areas across the country have what they call resource centers to deal with your youth that aren't going to school, your status offenders, those that are having behavioral issues. We have a, a very robust missing youth initiative going on in this county, but it's really trying to come up, working with the community as to better ways that we can service these youth earlier to stop them from ever entering the juvenile justice system. We're also working on alternatives to high school completion. And I'm sure Brad will talk to you and, and explain all the great educational things we, we are doing at DCYC. But reality is, most of those youth, when they enter DCYC, are so far academically behind, because they've been missing, that it's very difficult for them to obtain a high school diploma. high school diploma. So how do we, as a county, as a system, ensure that these youth have their full opportunity? Because that leads into the next one, is our job training programs. We're working on with Metro Community College and other community providers. I have some wonderful scholarships we've put together out there that these youth could use and get job training, but I need them to have a high school diploma. So we have to concentrate on that area and come up with ways to get them that high school diploma. Another area we're working on, and this is with regards to formal processing, and, and I just want to bring this data up so that everybody's familiar, our youth that we have charged as adults, and I'm talking about within the Douglas County Youth Center. Currently today, I can tell you guys, we have sixty-four youth at DCYC, but when you start looking at the data, anywhere between fifty to sixty percent of those youth are youth charged within our adult criminal system. And what you'll hear from Brad is that makes a huge difference on their length of stay. It's not forty-five days. It's closer to, when you look at it, a hundred-and-seventy-five to a hundred-and-ninety-five days that those youth are sitting in, in detention. We know for those youth charged as adults, eighty-five percent of them are youth of color. Seventy-five percent of these youth are there with a, usually some type of gun charge, so that's the main charge we're, we're looking at. Ages of the youth, I can tell you, we have had fourteen-year-olds. In fact, we just had a fourteen-year-old that was there for over a year, charged as an adult. But most of them are fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-olds. You'll notice sixteen is the largest age. The sad part is, when you look at the rate or the number of youth at DCYC, you do always have to look at length of stay. Fifty percent of these youth that are charged as adults have been in there prior to February first, some of them over a year going back to May. So some of the initiatives I've listed there that we're currently working on, because this is not just a Douglas County issue, it's a state issue. We have started a, a joint data analysis with State Probation and us to really look at the systemic barriers for each of these youths. We have worked with Senator Panzing Brooks and Senator Vargas, and they have sponsored a legislative resolution to be heard before the unicameral this fall, looking at this particular issue, both from statutory change standpoint and also process. We are working with our state and local JDAI, our Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, to include this population within that initiative. Currently, it is not part of it. Um, we've been meeting with local and district court judges, talking about processes, and also meeting with the Chief Justice and the Administrative Office of the Courts, because, as we know, sometimes the wheels of justice in our court system are not fast. So how can we ensure that these youths are prioritized and, and are brought to the forefront? Detention, I'm going to talk briefly about some things, and then I'm sure Brad will give you more details. The home program. We have been working on expanding the home program, as you guys are, are aware. Currently, the home program, um, involves electronic monitors. When you look at the research out there with regards to electronic monitors, while they are effective, they're not the most effective tool to keep the community safe and the youth following their plan. What needs to go along with it are stability services. In other words, in-home services to stabilize that, that home. So what we've done, we've made a request with OJJDP, our Title II Grant, because, as I said, eighty-five percent of these youth are youth of color, to use our Title II RED Grant to purchase and to implement these, um, stability services. Good news is, yesterday, I, we just got oral approval from the feds to be able to use that funding in that fashion. That will give us about two-hundred to two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars a year in grant funds to use to purchase these. When we looked at the data for two thousand and nineteen, we found that there were approximately thirty-two pre-adjudicated youth that we felt could have remained in their home if we had these services in place. So we need to get these services in place, and our goal is to have them in place by the end of the year through an RFP process with community providers. Things that, initiatives we have going on within DCYC, we have a crisis response team that is paid for by a Region Six Grant, um, that's a therapeutic intervention by licensed mental health practitioners to deal with the youth's mental behavioral health issues. I know I have talked to many of you about our Behavioral Health Initiative. I have to tell you guys, we're the first in the nation to try this collaborative effort. It's a multidisciplinary team that meets weekly to really look at the mental and behavioral health needs of our youth. And who's on that team is UNMC Department of Psychiatry, CHI Department of Psychiatry, Charles Drew, from a navigator system, once the youth goes into the community, probation, public defender, DCYC staff. Every week, and I'm sure Greg can talk to you some more as our expediter, on how many youth they actually do discuss every week, and how we can get services faster to get youth out of detention in a more expedient fashion. We also will be starting this fall the UNO mentoring program. It's a collaborative with the UNO Department of Criminal Justice, and they've expanded it now to UNMC medical students that are actually going to be mentors for youth in our facility beginning in September. Last thing I just want to mess, mention with regards to this is, we have applied for an OJJDP grant application for a room confinement and recidivism grant. It's a three-year grant for six-hundred-thousand dollars. We should find out in September. Um, I do believe, based upon my discussions with OJJDP, we are one of the finalists for that. So what that would allow us to do is to really work and bring in a manager of behavioral mental health services, but also the implementation of motivational interviewing, and an evidence-based program known as Target for all of our staff. Um, there's research out there that shows one of the key areas to concentrate on when it comes to recidivism of our youth is how they are treated by the adults around them, which doesn't surprise any of us, and that includes the staff in a detention facility. I've also put on some other further initiatives that we're looking at and to considering going forward. Last thing I just want to mention are some systemic initiatives. Um, we've been working on the past six months. Our OJJDP Title II Racial and Ethnic Disparity Grant, as you guys did approve. Um, Impact Justice has started a, a study on our county with regards to RED. We hope to have that done within the next year. We are, there are lunch and learns that are occurring every month for all stakeholders with regards to racial and ethnic disparity issues. Second thing that I know you've been talking to before, but I'm pleased to announce it's now operational, is Omaha Home for Boys Shelter. Um, once it's fully operational, it will be a twelve-bed shelter. It's an alternative to detention. Currently, um, they're having about six to eight youth there until they can get their staff built up. Um, last one, if, if you read the paper, um, this week, is the Nebraska Youth Justice Initiative. They expect to have it completed. It will be a thirty-two-bed group home with treatment service located in, in North Omaha. That will be a no-reject policy, so once the youth is there, they will remain there. And it also will put the youth close to their families so that it can be more of a wraparound service. It's our belief that this placement will become an alternative to detention, not the full thirty-two beds, because we also know as, as a county, we have at any time, anywhere between ten and twenty youth placed out of state. Our goal is to get those youth back into their county so we can deal with it in a holistic manner. I know I talked very fast, because I know you've been here all day, but if anybody has any questions, you know, please ask, or I'm more than willing to give anybody any further information.
Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you very much. I appreciate this, and I'm really glad to have you aboard, too. Let's just, I'll start backwards, because you just talked about Omaha Home for Boys Shelter and the Nebraska Youth Justice Initiative. That makes up forty-four beds, and, uh, one of the things that I've been concerned about is that this number of beds, it's supposed to be, it was originally forty-six across the street, and then it goes, one time it bounced up to ninety, and the police were pushing for that. And, um, so I just, I feel like, uh, we're breaking ground over there, and we don't know what size building we should be building. That's where I am. I'm really, you know, and this is great, we've got these, I assume there are contracts with somebody to opt, to pay for the operations of this, and I, I don't think that, well, I suspect that what will happen is Douglas County will be asked to pick up those contracts at some time in the future. Do you think that'll happen?
There is a difference. If the youth has been adjudicated within juvenile court and they are on probation, that would be paid for by State Probation.
Okay, I'm talking about, are you talking about the Omaha Home for Boys Shelter and the?
Right, so some of the youth placed there are probation youth being paid for by probation. If they are pre-adjudicated youth that have not been adjudicated yet in juvenile court, that is the county responsibility. Now, the good news is, Commissioner, that the daily cost of detention is anywhere between two-hundred-and-seventy-five to three-hundred dollars a day. The daily cost for a shelter is running about a hundred dollars a day. So it is, a shelter is a much cheaper and a better place to place youth.
Well, see, we, I don't know if anybody, I don't think anybody in the county has budgeted for that. If we have to take over that expense, that's, that's something else that bothers me, is that, I really, it's great that all these things are being developed, the Omaha Home for Boys and all the rest of it, but I am very concerned. I think sometime in the future, somebody's going to say, okay, I'm, I'm out of here, so it's, you know, we have to pick it up, and we aren't budgeting for that. And I, I'm concerned about that, and, uh, you know, that's just a real concern I have about all these folks, places that are being operated, whether it's a child-saving institute or whether it's Uta Holly or whoever, there's about four or five of these that are, that's my concern.
I think the key becomes, as a county, that we have to look at, as we have savings within DCYC and others, because the numbers have gone down, that thou, those funds, our savings, are going to help pay for these other initiatives, so you're not needing new funding, you're using the savings. Um, and I can get you some articles, Commissioner, in other states how they have done this, and where they have shown the savings.
Okay, well, I, I'm just saying, no one's budgeted for that.
Right.
And so that's going to be a, you know, a surprise. I'm just going to go to one other thing that I think we ought to consider. You know, these kids sit in there, and I just, it's, uh, terrible how long they're, they're in there, uh, waiting for something, I'm not sure what, but the, what I was wondering about is over on formal processing, and, uh, you'll get ten extra points if you number these pages, but that's okay, formal processing. There's, uh, I think what we need to do is get, uh, first, I'm concerned because so many of these children have guns, and I don't know, uh, I just don't see them fitting into a lot of these programs, you know, that are, uh, that they could have probably qualified before the gun thing. So what makes me think is that maybe, and not, not just for North Omaha or South Omaha or Central Omaha, but I wonder whether we should be talking about a, a curfew. And the reason I say that is that, uh, the police have to have probable cause to stop somebody, and I know that, you know, the last thing anybody wants anymore is, or police involvement, but, you know, if, if there's a curfew in effect, and they see a fifteen-year-old kid or someone who looks young walking down the street at three in the morning, they can pull him over. You have probable cause because he's too, too young to be out. That's the probable cause part, and then, you know, it's kind of like a taillight out on a car. That's where the, so many things go wrong, I guess, or would happen. We don't have that, and I, and I, when I was mayor, I thought maybe we should install it, and I got some support and a hell of a lot of criticism, and I wasn't gearing it for any particular part of the city, but we need to, need to maybe think about that, you know? There's a, there's a young, whoops, a young man in there that I think was there for two-hundred-and-sixty-six days, and, uh, I think what we ought to do is enact what we do for the adults, that adults have to go to trial within a certain time, you know, the speedy trial is constitutional, and I wonder why it doesn't apply to children? You know, these children need to, need to be, and I don't know what's holding that up. I think it's an, frankly, I think it's an argument between a prosecutor and somebody else that's dragging this on, but I think we need to get a speedy trial, uh, in there for these kids, speedy adjudication, uh, that they have to be, they have to be tried within forty-five days, something like that.
And Commissioner, to your point, there is the speedy trial requirement for these youth charged as adults. That's why we're doing the deep dive into the data to figure out why it is taking nine months to a year before they even get to trial. What are some better ways that we can ensure that that happens?
Make it the law, make it a law.
Well, and that's the reason for the legislative resolution also, because what we found is that a lot of times they're stuck in juvenile court on a motion to, I mean, in adult court, on a motion to transfer to juvenile court, and when they passed the law three, four years ago, there's no requirement as to when the judge has to issue their decision from that hearing, so some judges have been sitting on it for months and months. Um, there's also a lot of continuances in these cases by both defense and by the prosecutor, probably for some right reasons, but how can we ensure that that doesn't delay due process and?
I think anything over forty-five days, anybody who participates in elongating that deserves a big rubber stamp on their record that says, shame, shame. I'm deadly serious. We have to have a forty-five-day rule, get those kids prosecuted, or they're, they're free. That's the way that it should be, just like an adult. You can't, you gotta have a speedy trial, and anybody messing around, I've got other words for it, but messing around, you know, not making a decision, uh, then we'll make it for them.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, nice job.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Kim, for this. This, um, uh, again, you know, we talk a lot about the, uh, buildings, and we talk a lot about programs, but I love your first quote, that we need to be really talking about the individual and the youth, uh, themselves. And on your page three, where it said eighty-five percent of grant funds are for community-based providers east of Seventy-second Street, and then you go to your page four, and the top zip codes, um, in that, um, that include the youth that we're serving are six-eight-one-zero-four, six-eight-one-zero-seven, and six-eight-one-one-one. Is there, or can we go back and look at what we're providing, again, the eighty-five percent east of Seventy-second, and how many of those providers are touching these zip codes or what they're providing in those specific zip codes?
Sure.
Again, I think if you would, um, and the GIS and Health Department, when they talk about their social determinants, when you start overlaying maps on all of the issues, it's not a surprise, because these three zip codes keep coming up. So again, if we can drill down even farther on what's being provided by who and where within these zip codes, um, that may be just useful information for us as we go forward with making decisions on CBA funds.
Great suggestions, we'll work on that.
On your eight, page eight, um, it's, I would like to see us add two additional bullet points for further initiatives, and that is the, your brain injury, um, conver, uh, discussion that we've had about, um, assessing for that and for dyslexia. Because again, I know I sound like a soapbox all the time, but so many children that either have a brain injury or are actually then, um, diagnosed with having dyslexia, so many of those are automatically placed in the behavioral health system because they haven't been properly diagnosed, and they go for a very, very long time sometimes, um, within those systems, not really getting the help that they need. And so, um, again, we have a great educational system going over at the youth center, but I think we need to add these assessments and programs so that, um, that we can do all we can do to try to figure out and assess these youth, why we have them, and what we can do when they, uh, go out to the community.
Yep.
But thank you, this is helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner Borges. Other comments or responses for Kim?
I have one, I was, I ran, I'm sorry to do that. I, Brad Ashford called me, and I had lunch with him, and he talked about a, a person out at, uh, UNO that had done something, I'll get you the paperwork on it, but there's somebody who really did a fabulous, uh, some, a lot of work on some things like this, too, but Brad is a real asset as well, as you probably know.
Yes, he and I talk a lot.
Good. Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kim.
Hey, thanks a lot, Kim.
Thanks, Kim.
I appreciate this very much.
Appreciate the update.
Thank you for these public conversations. It's helpful.
And, and speaking of Brad, next on the agenda, we have our Douglas County Youth Center report from Brad Alexander.
Hi, Brad.
Hello.
I saw you around here all day. Oh, thanks.
Hello, Commissioners, Brad Alexander with the Douglas County Youth Center.
Good afternoon, Brad.
It's good to be back here. I haven't been here since February, and actually, I haven't even stepped foot in this building since February, so I feel like I'm out and about again. We had the Child and Youth Services Committee last week, and Commissioner Rogers had asked that I give an update on our response to mitigate, uh, COVID. Okay. So I will do that real quick, and then I have a, a PowerPoint that I think I can go through fairly quickly, and then, of course, you'll hear from, from Greg, so, kind of in a chronological order, the Douglas Okay, so I will do that real quick, and then I have a, a PowerPoint that I think I can go through fairly quickly, and then, of course, you'll hear from, from Greg, so, kind of in a chronological order, um, the Douglas County Youth Center. We always pride ourselves on keeping a clean facility, um, but when this hit, and we became concerned back in February, we, we really started to, uh, to ramp up some deep cleaning, really focusing on those touchpoints like, uh, keys, phones, countertops, rails, door handles, and, and really paid, paid close attention to, to those. March ninth was the date that we actually, um, suspended non-mandated services and programs at the youth center. Uh, March eleventh was when we began to do the temperature screening for everyone that entered the building, be it a new admission, employee, a visitor. Um, March fourteenth was when we suspended, uh, personal visits for, for young people. But, uh, we quickly worked with our phone vendor, and were able to get them to, uh, agree to allow unlimited phone calls for the kids home, um, at no cost to them. I mean, we've always had it set up so they could make one phone call home at, at no cost, but they agreed to, to waive the cost for any phone call home, which was, was nice, and we actually had that taken care of and implemented by March sixteenth. Uh, March fourteenth was when we began to quarantine the young people for fourteen days, the new admissions. We had been working to identify staff that could work from home, and, and, and we started to do that on March sixteenth, is when they started to, to go home to, to work. Um, March sixteenth, we had a conversation with probation intake, um, they would always have face-to-face contacts when they were doing an intake assessment with the young people. We worked to identify a private area where the kid could go, so that that conversation could, could remain confidential, and yet they wouldn't have to be in the same room with, uh, with the young person, and that was in place March sixteenth. Uh, March seventeenth, the home program, they continued to, to see the kids every single day, that's important, they have that relationship with young people, and we need to maintain that. But we didn't feel like it was a good idea from them to go inside the homes, and so, uh, on that date, they would go to the homes, the young person, weather permitting, um, would come outside, and they would have a conversation out there with, uh, proper social distancing. March seventeenth, we had everything set up so that, uh, any professional visitor could do video conferencing with, with the young people at the youth center. Uh, March twentieth was when juvenile court began to ramp up, um, uh, their ability to provide virtual courtrooms at the youth, so we were actually fortunate in, in, in a certain regard, was, we had been doing that with kids that are from other counties for some time, so, so we were well-positioned for that, um, they just had to get some things taken care of, and, and they really were pretty expeditious, and, and on April first, they actually started doing all virtual court hearings at the, at the Douglas County Youth Center, we weren't transporting the kids to, to court. We only have five nurses, and so that's a, that's a, they're important for one, for sure, and it's a pretty limited commodity, and so we, we really needed to protect them, and, uh, so we adjusted their schedules, and only had one of them in the building at a time, um, and we did that on March, March twenty-seventh. Um, March twenty-ninth is when we began to sanitize all of the food carts as they came over from, from the health center. April third, all of the staff were required to wear masks. We continued to, to restrict the movement of the young people, and so it was important for us to, to provide something for them on the units, and so on, uh, April sixth, we purchased Xboxes and put them on each of the units, and staff came out of the woodwork and donated some, some games and so forth, that were made available to the young people on the units. April, and, and we did this anticipation of this April ninth date, was, which was when, uh, we began to conduct all the schooling online, um, and provided the packets to the young people. July third, going into the Fourth of July holiday, um, we worked with public properties, and they had a, a, a company called FBG, and they came through and completely sanitized the entire facility. And that's the same, at that time, we, you know, it was, it was that moment of time, you know, you're, you're clean, or you at least you feel somewhat comfortable. And that's when we handed out the masks, and all the kids, when they came out of their rooms, then had to, had to wear masks. Dr. Poor had had a conversation with her going into the Fourth of July holiday, and she had suggested that, uh, if possible, we have all of our staff tested following the Fourth of July holiday, and that, uh, I can't thank her enough, because that turned out to be really, really valuable, um, we followed her directions, and there was actually three employees that, that tested positive right on the heels of the Fourth of July holiday, all three of them were asymptomatic. I mean, one got the, the notice that he was positive, um, for COVID, as he sat in the, at the admissions counter downstairs, he was at work, had no symptoms. Um, so thankfully, Dr. Poor provided that recommendation, and, and thankfully, we, we followed that, um, certainly protected others, for sure. July, July ninth is when we started to provide programming via video, um, July ninth, we also purchased, uh, or leased air purification systems, and those were installed on July thirteenth, they went into each of the living units, um, medical, um, and our lobby area. And it was, again, after that full facility testing, we became concerned, like I said, the one person was down in admissions, of course, you do the contact tracing, and you start to realize you have eleven people that work admissions, and, and now you have to quarantine, and at one point, it was half of those people, and so, dot com was, was, was great. We started working on it literally on a Thursday, and by Friday evening, I was running computers out to booking officers, and they were set up to go, uh, um, to be able to book young people into the youth center remotely. And so, again, we're trying to preserve that resource, um, they're back to work now, but at least we have that ability if we ever have to employ that again. Mark's been working with Children's Hospital and UNMC, um, they're gonna provide eight, um, rapid tests each month for us, um, time is of the essence, so many, you know, when these things come up, you really want an answer quickly, and so they're agreeing to do eight rapid tests for us each month. Of course, we've submitted our, uh, we've actually had our review with, for the CARES Act funding with the consultants, and I'll be in front of the CARES Act Board on, uh, on Monday morning to pr, uh, present our proposal. So since this began, we've had eight employees test positive, um, and the last test that we had, the last positive test we had was July thirty-first. We still have two employees that are out, one actually was hospitalized, he had some, some other health issues that were really, really complicated, to be honest, we were really concerned for him, um, he just was released from the hospital yesterday. And so, uh, all but two of our people are, are back to work now, and I gotta really thank, uh, well, so many people, everybody at the Douglas County Youth Center, to be honest with you, I mean, they did the right thing, I mean, when they weren't feeling well, um, they didn't come to work, and that sounds so simple, but it's so critical. Um, and they did those things, and then you got people like, uh, Rondi Woodard, and Wayne Lovett, and, and John Mack, and we, I, I think the social con, or the, the, the contact tracing was so critical for us as we went through this process, and I mean, literally, I mean, it was, you know, there was a holiday involved, and we got a positive test, and all of a sudden, we're all on, you know, in front of a computer trying to, because we need to let people know as quickly as we can that you gotta go home, or you're quarantined, or whatever the case might be, and they just stepped up every single time. So a special thanks to them, and really everybody at the, at the Douglas County Youth Center, and that certainly is not an exhaustive list of, of what we've done, but it's, uh, I think it kinda highlights some of the things.
Thank you, Brad.
Yes.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair, I just, Brad kinda alluded to it, but I just wanted to, again, um, I, we mentioned this a little bit in the meeting, but, um, they haven't gotten the limelight as adult corrections, um, with what they've been dealing with, so that's good. Uh, it's kinda not a matter of if, but when, but I do wanna thank them and the staff here publicly for what they've done on that, and that's a lot, while they haven't been re, reporting, because I figured that was more important. So now that things are a little contained, and they got an idea, I wanna thank them for that, and, uh, tell all the staff we appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers.
I, I'm gonna go through this, uh, PowerPoint, um, we're gonna start on slide number three, please. So, uh, since, since March, well, since January, we have, uh, our kids have earned three-hundred-and-six-six credits, that's, that's down when you compare us to previous years at this point in time, but, uh, still, it's good. And I, I think what I wanna point out is, to our education department's credit, a hundred-and-fifty-six of those three-hundred-and-six credits have been earned since March. Um, so they've been, they've been doing their job at the best they can, and under some difficult circumstances, and, and still putting the kids first. And I, I think another really cool thing is that four of our kids since March have earned, uh, the credits to graduate, so even during this difficult time, we were able to put them in a situation to earn the, the credits to graduate from, from high school. And slides three through eight is a, kind of an outline of the different programs that are available, and you can, you can look at those as you'd like, but I think I'll go ahead and jump on over to slide number nine. Um, I, every single one of the, uh, the programs that you see on those slides three through eight, um, are either currently taking place remotely, or they're, they will, they will be by the, uh, by the end of September. And sometimes that was us being a little bit, uh, a little bit slow, and sometimes we were, other people weren't in a position to, to do that right away, and we kinda had to wait for them as well, but, uh, but we're certainly getting there. So slide number nine. Going back to twenty-thirteen, again, that year was kind of selected because, uh, that was the year that we could no longer, status offenders, whether they violated a court order or not, can no longer come to the youth center, so it kinda, it was a good starting point, I think. So the, the twenty-twenty numbers are actual numbers, um, seventy-six is, is what our average daily population has been this year, um, thirty-seven is, is the length of stay in total, and of course, this is for admissions for kids in both the du, adult and, and juvenile court, and then four-hundred-and-eleven admissions. And we'll go over to slide eleven, please. And we've worked to, uh, to separate some of this data out, so if you can, you can see it specifically as it relates to juvenile court, and then again, specifically as it relates to adult court, and so it's a little bit different than, uh, the last time you, you saw this. So this slide number eleven is the average daily population for those kids that are just in juvenile court, and you can see where that's kind of trending down since twenty-seventeen, um, so the actual number for this year, um, through July thirty-first is forty-three. And slide number twelve is specific to those kids in adult court, and you can see where, where those numbers are, are kind of trending, not kinda, but they are, uh, trending up, and again, that thirty, yeah, for average daily population for kids in adult court is, is, uh, the actual number through July thirty-one. Slide thirteen, and this is, uh, you heard Kim talk about the average length of stay for kids in adult court, and it certainly is, it is high. Those months that you see down there is, uh, the previous twelve months, so, um, we're into, the last one that would have been reported is that ninety-seven in July, that would have been last month, and then, um, June prior to that, but, uh, average length of stay has so much, uh, influence over our average daily population, and when you see these high numbers, uh, high length of stay numbers, um, it certainly does drive that specific, uh, uh, population up in terms of their average daily population. And slide fourteen, um, this is the average length of stay for the kids in, in juvenile court, um, for over twenty-four hours, so any kid that had been stayed with us for longer than twenty-four hours, this is, this is their average length of stay, and again, for the previous twelve months, and so forty-three for kids that are not on probation, and fifty-six for those that are. I did just wanna point out, back in, uh, March, when everything was really heating up, and then April, um, we're kind of on the heels of all of this, and then people are kinda scrambling to, to figure things out, um, you can see the length of stay went up, I mean, significantly, the, the placements just simply were not, and I can't blame them, to be honest with you, they just weren't, at that point, you're, you're, you're scared, to be honest with you, and, and so you're trying to step back and figure things out, and so our kids, uh, the placements weren't taking those kids, and you can see what happened to, to length of stay when that happened, I mean, fortunately, our admissions numbers were going down, but, uh, the length of the stay kind of picked up for us. And the next slide, um, I think the only thing really, I mean, you got, these kids are all juvenile court admissions, um, the majority of our kids are pre-adjudicated, um, you look back historically, um, that wasn't always the case, we had a whole lot of kids that were there on probation violations, and there's been a lot of work, I think, in that area to, to kind of correct that, and you're starting to see some of that now, um, pre-adjudicated kids are the kids that we should be working with, I mean, we're the kids that are home, um, those are the kids that, uh, we need to provide the community support for, and, and to keep them home, and so we're, we're, we're at least moving in that direction, so I think that's good. And the next slide is strictly for adult court, um, and this is, these numbers are at the time of their admission, and like Kim had mentioned too, I mean, we have kids that, you know, they're trying to get transferred from juvenile court to adult court, well, they're not, but somebody is trying to transfer them from juvenile court to adult court, that lengthens the process. And of course, you got those kids that are in adult court, um, wanting to get transferred back to juvenile court for, for, I think, obvious reasons. But I don't think that, uh, these numbers are, are reflective of what it is our current population, like she pointed out, fifty to sixty percent of our kids on any given day, at any point in time, are gonna be, have at least one of their charges filed in adult court. Um, slide number nineteen, please. Classification at admissions, this is adult court, I think the, the takeaway here is that, uh, you know, obviously, the majority of those kids are, are being charged with felonies. The next slide, twenty-one, has to do with the reason for admissions, this is for both adult and juvenile court. Um, sixty-nine percent of, uh, sixty, sixty-nine percent of our new admissions, um, are for new charges, brand-new charges, um, eight, uh, KPSO unlawful absences at seventeen percent, violation of probation at ten percent, failure to appear, um, juvenile court, three-and-a-half percent, failure to appear county court, less than one percent. Um, the next slide has to do the top ten offenses, you're muting somebody? Eighty-five percent of, uh, thank you. Fifteen percent of, uh, of our admissions on new charges are for gun charges, fifteen percent robbery, assaults of all types, uh, eleven percent, theft by receiving, eleven percent, possession with intent to deliver a controlled substance, nine percent, theft by unlawful taking, nine percent, burglary, six percent, sexual assault, four percent, terroristic threats, three percent, and criminal mischief, two percent. Next slide, um, admissions by ra, race, and again, this is for those kids that are in adult and juvenile court, um, seventy-six percent of our admissions are, are youth of color, um, in, so far in twenty-twenty, and that's consistent with what we saw in, in twenty-nineteen, twenty-eighteen. Next slide has to do with zip codes, six-eight-one-one-one, um, is the number one zip code in terms of our admissions, a hundred-and-eighty-one, and this is over the course of the last twelve months, um, eighty-six out of one-oh-four, seventy-two out of one-oh-seven, fifty out of one-one-zero, and thirty-three out of one-twelve. Um, the home program, um, there's seventeen kids on that program today, um, the average daily population this year has been eighteen, um, we've admitted seventy-four kids, um, so we've been, during all this, we're on track to, to be pretty consistent with where we were at in twenty-nineteen. The home program, breakdown by race, um, seventy-three percent of the kids that they work with on the home program are, are youth of color, um, which is, when you look at what we have in the youth center, that's, that's, we, we should be working with, with that, that, that shouldn't surprise anybody. That is my report, I will take any questions, or turn it over to Greg for his report.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Thank you for this, um, just, uh,
I, I hope you won't repeat what you missed when you left the chamber while he was giving his presentation.
I hope this is coming off of your time, Mr. Chairman. Um, just to, uh, give us some metrics to go by, the, uh, charts that you have in here are very instructive, and I appreciate you, uh, making them easy to understand, so, on page nine, where you go into the average length of stay, we're looking at thirty-seven days, uh, and the average daily population, we're looking at seventy-six, and you give us a good back view, this goes back to twenty-thirteen, where instead of the average daily population today of seventy-six, in twenty-thirteen, it was seventy-three. Instead of the average daily length of stay of thirty-seven today, in twenty-thirteen, it was twenty-six, so essentially, the same. So essentially, the same, despite the fact that we keep hearing from some of my colleagues about the legislature changed the law, and this is going to bring down the population, hasn't moved the needle. Hasn't moved the needle. Numbers don't lie. You got a great example of the population staying the same, length of stay staying the same. And then when we get to the population composition on page twenty-three, African-Americans, fifty-five percent. Hispanics, eighteen percent, Native Americans, one point two, Asians, two. That's over eighty percent. Balance are Caucasians, twenty-four percent, which way, way, way out of whack with the population of Douglas County from a racial point of view. And that hasn't changed either. In 2011, African-Americans were fifty-one percent, and Hispanics were thirteen percent, and Native Americans were two percent. Hasn't changed, the needle hasn't moved. So, you know, it's difficult to hear kind of two totally at-odds presentations like yours, which is reality based on numbers. These are metrics, numbers don't lie. And what we just heard from Ms. Havicati about all these wonderful programs, all these initiatives, and I'm not taking anything away from the people involved in those, I'm just saying, numbers don't lie. The needle's not moving. And, you know, I've asked you this before, and I guess, you know, I, I won't belabor the point, but there are underlying reasons why we have an overwhelming population of children of color incarcerated in Douglas County. And there are underlying reasons why the average length of stay does not change despite all the diversion programs. There are underlying reasons why the average incarcerated population number of kids locked up doesn't change. And it's not affected by any of these wonderful programs that we keep hearing about. I'm sure that the people employed with them are happy to have the jobs. They don't change these numbers, that's my only point. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments for Mr. Alexander? Commissioner Boyle.
Aye, yow. I think, you know, poverty again is such a terrible thing, and that I think this, that contributes so much to what kind of lives these young people live. I mean, you know, they just, it's, last week, I, matter of fact, on Sunday, this is really weird. I was driving, driving home, and I was on Dodge Street, and there was some tree being cut, so I turned north and drove through, just west of Saint Mary's, Saint Margarit Mary's Church, where I used to belong, and drove down the street. And all at once, these homes became just overwhelming, I couldn't believe them. They were just stunning, the yards and all the rest of it. And I left there, and I thought, my God, I just had a totally different brain set. I saw these men walking great big dogs, and everything's so peaceful, and all this lovely and all that. And I, I got to the corner on, on Underwood, and then I went east to go to my house, I live downtown in Brandeis now. And I mean, and it's nice, I love it and everything else, but I'm just thinking to myself, what a total different life, you know? And here these kids are that are, you know, they want tennis shoes. So I mean, it's, it's just a totally different program. One of the things I'd like to do, incidentally, I see Saint Francis is mentioned here on page six, I'd like to have them come in and talk to us a little bit. I, I hear they're horribly understaffed, and it's really having some problems with the children, so I think we need to hear from them about what's going on, if we could. I like this programming on seven with, particularly with women, I like this a lot, this is really a good thing, young girls. One of the things that I brought up earlier, I'm really curious, well, I didn't bring this up earlier, but on page nineteen, I was talking to a police officer who is retired from the gang unit, and he said, you know, the, the numbers are so high, and because so many young people, when they're picked up, are charged with serious things, there's no, you know, cite and release. And I guess, and on these, of course, you can't just cite and release if you've got some kid with a gun. And I think things have changed, I could be wrong, but it seems like there's a lot more children with guns. So, but he was saying that that's probably one of the reasons that contributes to the high, high number of children that are incarcerated. You know, it's an excellent report, and it, it is concerning when you look at, you know, on page twenty-two, the number of, I assume that gun charges, robbery, assault, and theft by receiving, and probably possession of controlled substance are felonies. So I mean, you get all these serious charges, I'm not sure what they used to be in the past, you know? But, and that kind of brings me to the point where I'm real concerned about the programs that are being proposed. You know, I think, I really am concerned that some of the programs to get, to help these young people, that it's, I don't want to say that it's too late, but that it's, they really don't seem to me to be appropriate, you know? I guess if, if I had a child who took my car and sold it, you know, somehow managed to sell it, I'd, my, my punishment for that would be a whole lot more if the kid just took the car and drove it around for a Saturday night or something, you know what I mean? It's a different level of, and I'm real concerned that we're just not going to have the programs that really will deal with the children who are there, that they, they need so much more from us. I guess that's all I'll say. I did have, oh, I would have one other thing, excuse me. There was a fellow who, Latino, who was telling me that he went, he was in the facility for some reason, and that he had a couple of young Mexicans come up and start talking to him, and they, they felt like there hadn't really been any exposure to Latinos. Now, that's probably not correct, but I don't know what your population is, or what your employee status is of people of, of color. But anyway, I just passed that on. It's a tough job.
I appreciate that. Thank you. We, we have to be out of the chambers in thirteen minutes. Commissioner Rogers.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just real quick, I want to rebut the statement that was made, there hasn't been any change. That's a, a very, to me, uninformed, distorted view, and a simplistic way of looking at it. Page nine was mentioned. What I want to point out to people is page eleven and twelve. And page eleven and twelve are what's been broken down, and as you can see, those numbers for the kids that are under juvenile charges have decreased. The numbers that are under adults have increased, and I think Ms. Havicati pointed that out. The direct target, because of Nebraska's system of juvenile justice, which is rehabilitative in nature, eleven, page eleven is the immediate target, because those are the ones that can be there. So there, to say there hasn't been progress is a false statement, and one that's uninformed without understanding where the spots are in there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Bergerson. All right, thank you. Okay. Anything else?
We can, if you want to hear Greg's, I know you're on limited time, so.
Yeah.
He's saying do it five minutes if you want to.
Okay, we'll try, we do have some other business we need to take care of, and we're down to about eleven minutes left in the chamber.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I will get this done as quick as possible. First thing I need to do, oh, Greg Hepburn, Douglas County Youth Center expediter, and first thing I want to do is alert you all to several oversights and, and typos that are on here. On page, on slide two, ninety-five detainees, sixty-three detainees, is what the, both of those numbers should be, it says ninety-five and seventy-three. Both of those should be sixty-three. And then on, same thing on slide three, should be, instead of seventy-three, should be sixty-three. Next on slide seven, should be, instead of thirteen, should be eleven. Last one on slide nine, should read sixty-one under evaluations as opposed to sixty-three. So, that being said, I'll kind of highlight a couple of things that stood out to me. Again, this is just at a glance, as of August twentieth, is what our, what our count was at sixty-three, and I'll just go through some breakdown stuff. Starting off with the length of stay on slide four. So just a couple of things about that. The numbers are actually, have been really congruent on days one through thirty. We had twenty youth there that were on juvenile charges, one youth that was adult, and one was juvenile and adult. And you can read the numbers that go across from thirty-one to sixty, and then sixty-one to ninety. There are five youth that were there with juvenile charges on ninety-one to a hundred and eighty days, which is a little concerning. But when you look at the reasons why they're there, and some of them who actually had release orders and were awaiting those. And then the second part of it is a hundred and eighty-one to three hundred and sixty days. There were two youth there that were on juvenile charges, which is definitely an extended period of time. One of those youth that was on juvenile charges was there for very serious charges, and the second one was being held from another county, which above that, on that same duration, you can see that there were four youth that were being held there, three of which were, had, had adult charges, one of which had juvenile charges. So that just kind of gives a little breakdown and glimpse of that. Second thing to highlight would be for the, on slide seven, pre-adjudicated youth. What I started doing is looking at not only the youth that were there that were pre-adjudicated, but also, we have eight of them who are still pre-adjudicated, and then only three of them were actually adjudicated dur, during, throughout that, throughout that time process. So that makes a difference, because when they're already adjudicated, we know that they're, they're likely sentenced to probation, and so someone is actually looking at what it is that they're doing, and they have a plan for probation at that time. Three of those youth who are pre-adjudicated actually recidivated. The thing that really kind of jumped out to me is five of those eleven youth who were pre-adjudicated actually were there for, for violent charges. Which leads to the next slide on slide eight, and that's just a breakdown of probation youth and recidivism. So with that, the probation youth, there are twenty-one that are there because they picked up new charges. Thirty of those youth were actually readmitted, so that's what the recidiv, recidivism looks like from that standpoint. Three of those youth actually violated probation, and then in terms of the reasons why they had any type of capias, there were five youth that were, that had unlawful absence, six that were detained on failure to appear's, one that was detained on a combination of unlawful absence and failure to appear, and then one for a, a felony, two, excuse me, two for felony locates. Last, slide eight. Only thing that stands out right here, I wanted to kind of bring this to attention, so with the MDT meetings, you know, it's been, things have been going really well for that, and, you know, maybe next time I'm going to be able, have the little opportunity to talk in depth about it. But with CHI at the table, with UNMC at the table, it's been a really good impact on one of the five reasons why we see delays in youth, and that's the evaluations. So, excuse me, well, we have sixty-three youth that are there. Two of them are currently awaiting evaluations, and typically in the past, that number would run anywhere from five to ten. So you can see a reduction of that, and then we have five youth there currently who actually have already completed their evaluation. So that's one thing that I really wanted to point out. And then also, we have three youth who are awaiting, they have, actually have release orders currently, and two of those youth were actually released already. So those are, that's the, the, you know, skinny version of the report. I wish I'd had a little bit more time to go in depth, but you have the information there, and I apologize about those oversights as well.
Well, I apologize that we are so short on time, by the time we get to your work, Greg, your work is important, and I, I would like to give it more attention than we're able to today, and I apologize for that, but thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anything else, Brad?
That's it, thank you all very much.
Thank you all, and I'm sorry to, to rush through that, but we do have just a couple of minutes left, and we do have a couple of action items left on the agenda.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next is consideration slash action on visitor improvement fund for Douglas County Historical Society of twenty-two thousand dollars. Okay, routine item, pandemic didn't get filed in time, this is the way they have to go, thank you, call for the vote.
Motion passes six to zero, Commissioner Craft is absent.
Thank you. Legislative issues, I, I see that Sean Kelly's been waiting for
Oh, you're kidding.
Four and a half hours here.
We don't pay you by the hour, do we?
No.
Sorry.
No problem. Good afternoon, Chairman Duda and Douglas County Board of Commissioners. I provided a written report for all of you that goes into great detail, and I know we're short on time, to give you a broad overview of the 2019 and 2020 sessions and your resolutions. There were twenty-seven in total, nineteen of those resolutions had a favorable outcome. In 2020 alone, there were ten resolutions, six of those tens had a favorable outcome, four did not. So I would say our 2019 and 2020 legislative, legislative sessions were, were very successful. Twenty-twenty was, just like everything in 2020, was a very unusual legislative session, and those last seventeen days were, were pretty tense. And on that note, the 2021 session may be very similar in nature, so I'd encourage staff and commissioners to work on our 2021 legislative agenda sooner rather than later, because it's right around the corner, and timing-wise, it'll be really challenging to get our legislative package introduced in the right way, if we have a limited amount of time.
Very good.
Timely as well on the interim study resolutions, in, in an earlier presentation on the inheritance tax, that one was introduced on that by Senator Clements. So that issue could be, become another topic of conversation next session, so something, obviously, we've always kept a close eye on. And then lastly, legislature will look different, six senators are term limited, the incumbents had a very good primary, so don't, know if we'll get a lot of turnover from that standpoint, but we will have three new senators from the Douglas County delegation. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Sean. Commissioner Burris.
Since we're running short, but thank you so much, it was a very odd legislative year, and I just know that you stayed on top of it to, to the absolute, I mean, you didn't miss a beat, even though things were different. And so I appreciate all the work that you did for Douglas County.
Thank you. Great job. Thanks for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Okay, yes, appreciate it, Sean. Item three, resolution to approve change in payroll for those in current pay status to an arrears pay status, coming from Clark. I'm sorry, who made that? All right, Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Bergerson, kind of a self-explanatory item, something that should have been done decades ago, but anyhow, motion and a second, call for the vote. Yeah, this thing votes funny.
So Commissioner Bergerson's voting yes, Commissioner Kavanaugh didn't get your, okay, motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We do have need, I'm afraid, of a long executive session, why not, that will be covering litigation, contract negotiations, and legal advice. And we will be up in room nine oh three for this, the negotiations need the technology.
Are you still going to consider cutting the Health Department budget?
That was just for Tim's benefit. Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session for Yeah, I, I've only got an hour left, but, but in about five minutes, we'll meet up in room nine oh three for executive session to discuss litigation, contract negotiations, and legal advice.
So motion by Commissioner Boyle, who was the second?
I second.
Okay.
I'm not, again, when we come out of executive session, the only action we'll take is to reconvene. reconvene and adjourn, but I'm not real sure where we'll do that, Mr. Clerk.
I'll work with, uh, Diana Patrick to...
Alright, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Boyle, do you vote yes?
He'll laugh.
Alright, well, there was enough, there's four votes, uh, Commissioners Kraft, Kavanaugh, and Boyle absent. Motion passes four zero.
Thank you, guys. See you next week.